Let's get the meeting started. Mr. Benton, invocation, Mr. Skinner can do the pledge.
Lord, thank you for this day. Again, thank you for every second, every moment that you allow us to continue our lives on this earth. Help us all to do your glory and spread your word as you've directed in the Bible. Let us be with us today as we make these important decisions for this county and our citizens and our employees. Be with us, guide us, and let us all act with decorum. In your name, in your glory, we pray. Amen.
Join me in your pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Mr. Taylor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. First item is the approval of the consent agenda. I have the floor computer, please. This afternoon's consent agenda is as follows. The approval of board minutes for March 8th and 22nd, 2016. Approval of a contract renewal to Anderson Oil Company for delivered heating oil awarded April 2014 with an option for four additional one-year terms. In this term, the price will be set based on the daily terminal price plus nine cents per gallon. Next is approval for a cost-share agreement with Chancellorsville Crossing for sewer line upgrades. County share of the cost to install and construct 1,879 feet of 10-inch sewer line is $486,986.22. Next is approval of a cross-share agreement with Chancellorsville Crossing for water line upgrades. County share of the cost to install 5,360 feet of 12-inch water line is $469,395.95. Next is approval of a contract with Commonwealth Irrigation and Landscape for grounds maintenance services. They were the low bidder at $287,982.36. This is for mowing, trimming, edging, mulching, pruning, and fertilizing of approximately 90 county sites. Next is approval of a purchase order contract to SHI International Corporation for Microsoft Enterprise Agreement License pricing, and that's an amount of $297,358.27. Next is appointment of Mark Cole to the Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Commission. Next is a word of Sp- to Spotsylvania County. This is a word of, an award, a recognition from the Virginia Institute of Government for our responsiveness to some of their work. Next is a budget amendment and appropriation for railroad repairs and repairs to county-owned railroad tracks. This is a budget adjustment of an addition of $254,539. Next is a business licensed refund of excess tax paid by Fairchild Trucking in the amount of $13,537. Next is a grant application request for the Bridges Employment Advancement for Temporary Assistance for Needies Families Program. This is a grant request will be for $220,000 with no local match. Item 13, Pelham's East Subdivision, street acceptance is the resolution for those streets to be included in the state secondary road system. Item 14, Presidential Disaster Declaration for Winter Storm Jonas Public Assistance Program. Jonas was a disaster for the Commonwealth and FEMA designated Spotsylvania County as a designated locality for potential assistance. Item 15 is returning the VRE event money to the fund balance and allocation of $40,000 will be returned. It's actually net of certain expenses. This was the downsized event relating to the opening of the VRE station. Next is reappointment of Linda Ball to the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board. Term expires June 30th of 19. Reappointment of Garrett Garner to the Economic Development Authority, Cortlande District. Term expires March 31st of 20. Next is acceptance of a deed of exclusive easement. This is from our school division for the Cedar Forest Tower Site for the Public Safety Radio Tower to be installed at Cedar Forest Elementary School. Next is a grant application request for the 2016-17 School Resource Officer and School Security Officer Incentive Grant Program. The required match is $18,085, and this would be for service at Brock Road Elementary. Next is a grant application request for FY17 Victim Witness Funding, Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant. Next is appointment of Mark Cole and Ed Petrovich to the Rappahannock Regional Jail Authority for a term that expires April 12th of 18. Next is a grant application requested for the FY17 Victim Witness Funding. The Commonwealth Attorney's Office, there is no local match for this grant. Item 23, Appointment of Ron Owens to the Economic Development and Tourism Committee. Term expires December 31st of 17. Next is appointment of Brian Moody to the Economic Development Authority, Berkeley District. Term expires 3/31/18, and that is your consent agenda for today.
Are there any items that anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Call the question. We could pull up the, skip ahead to the employee recognition.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Chair's direction, we're taking up an item of employee recognition. This is, want to do the sheriffs first, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, yes.
Okay. These are for employee of the year recognitions for last year. Oh, is Rose Hayward? There she is. Rose?
Yes.
You are up. Employee of the Year recognitions, please.
Okay. Well, we have two employees that were recognized for employee of the year. The first for public safety was Julie Belcher, and I'll just read a brief excerpt from the nomination form that was provided. A firefighter medic, Julie Belcher, is highly committed to serving the citizens and visitors of Spotsylvania County. She places a high value on customer service and goes far beyond what most employees would do to ensure that our customers are impressed with the services that we provide. Julie is not satisfied by providing services that simply meet our customers' expectations. She is devoted to exceeding their expectations on each and every call. Julie understands the importance of proper training and has helped numerous coworkers improve their knowledge and skills so that they provide an advanced level of services to our customers. Julie, on a regular basis, goes above and beyond. She provides training to members of Spotswood Baptist Church to certify them as CPR providers, oftentimes on her own time and without compensation. She does this to improve the safety in our community. She's also a primary advanced life support preceptor, providing effective and efficient services to our customers. As a member of the Spotsylvania County Search and Rescue Team, she was a key member involved in the search and rescue efforts of UVA student Hannah Graham. On her own time, she does many of these activities. Another example of her extraordinary efforts are while working on another crew's ambulance, she found a patient alert pendant. She went out of her way to ensure that the pendant was returned to the patient in a timely manner. And then we will recognize our employee of the year for general government, who is Karen Bailey, and if she's here, she can step up as well. You can just come to my left. Very good. Ms. Bailey maintains a high level of enthusiasm and initiative in her daily work activities. She provides excellent customer service when dealing with internal as well as external customers during the performance of her job duties. Karen is a self-starter and enjoys the challenges of new assignments outside of her specific duties and responsibilities. She continually performs work and completes tasks at a high level of efficiency with minimal supervision while maintaining communications with everyone involved. This is evident in her project management of several transportation projects that involved coordination between landowners, lenders, and county staff. Karen is a model employee who always embraces an opportunity to excel and is willing to obtain skills and knowledge to improve her job performance. Please join me in recognizing both Ms. Belcher and Ms. Bailey as employee of the year for Spotsylvania County. Congratulations. Well deserved. Can I sit now? Yes, thank you.
Real quick. Let the chief speak real quick, and then we'll get to the public comment.
Yes.
Yeah. Real quick.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just wanted to take a opportunity to bring to your attention some of the teamwork and fine work that's been going on in the public safety arena. I say teamwork, and that's because in order to have a successful outcome, it always takes a team. And in this case, I would like to recognize several members of the sheriff's office and members of fire and rescue, and then I would briefly talk about the incident. From the sheriff's office, Deputy Handy and Deputy Vasquez. From fire and rescue, Lieutenant Diablablis, who's with the Fire Marshal's Office. EMS supervisor, Lieutenant Scott Flavin. On our medic eight, which is out of Thornburg, medic Cammer and firefighter Campbell. And on the engine, acting officer Pollan and firefighter medic Griffin and firefighter Montana. On the 28th of March, we received a call of a person down in the Massaponix area of the county, and I'll be a little vague in some of the information, location, no names because of concerns with HIPAA confidentiality, but we received a call in the Massaponix area early in the morning on March 28th. Again, the call was a man down. Actually, the first to arrive was deputy Handy and deputy Vasquez with the sheriff's office. They are trained in the use of CPR and the use of automated external defibrillators similar to the one that Deputy Vasquez is holding today. Sometimes it comes up, how many are needed? Why do we need more? We need one in every sheriff's office vehicle because time is of the essence. And in this case, they were close to the patient, they had the proper equipment, they responded quickly, they responded fully trained, and they were able to start a sequence of events that saved a life. Shortly after the initial assignment, the call was upgraded to a cardiac arrest. Again, these two deputies reached the patient initially and provided prompt CPR and attached their issued AED to the patient. As crew members from wagon eight and medic eight were approaching the patient, the AED advised to shock the patient and to continue CPR. The medic crew arrived with an LP-15 defibrillator, which again is an ALS, one step above this unit, at which time the AED advised again to shock. After the second shock, the patient regained a pulse. All members worked quickly to prepare the patient for transport to the hospital and additional ALS treatments, including ALS drug therapy were performed. During transport, the EMS supervisor secured the airway using RSI protocol, which I've spoken about numerous times, and the need for EMS supervisors, and the patient was transported to Spotsylvania Regional Health Center, again, with basic spontaneous breathing and circulation. We've been following up weekly, and last week's information was the patient was still doing well and was hoping to go to a step-down room this week. As those of you may not know, a cardiac arrest victim is clinically dead, and it takes a lot of training, takes a lot of equipment, and takes a lot of teamwork to reverse that process. The three areas, again, training, quick response, and teamwork. You, as the Board of Supervisors, county administration, had those working for your citizen that day, and it greatly affected the outcome of that patient, and we certainly hope will give him many years to come and a long-lasting life. Again, these two deputies, if it were not for them with starting the CPR and knowing how to use an AED, that starts the whole thing. And if they can help maintain that patient, providing artificial respiration and, again, shocks, it certainly gives our medics a lot more viable patient, which is what we had this time. Again, I applaud the sheriff for being able to push this training and to continue to apply for grants to provide these units, and I certainly applaud our people for their fast response in helping to take over the patient and successfully transport him to the hospital. And with that, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. Sheriff, would you like to say anything?
I'm fine. Well, I'd just like to say, gentlemen, I appreciate everything you've done, and, you know, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, and I'm sure the rest of the county, I'd like to thank you for your efforts and just applaud you for being there to save a man's life. And, I mean, again, that's gonna, I mean, go a long way.
Thank you, guys. Great job. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross?
Without objection, I'd like to suspend the bylaws to allow public comment on previously discussed topic.
Is there any comment?
I have one.
Mr. Yakubowski?
One bit of comment. Though I don't object, I do want to caution the board that if we do this for one, we do for all, and I would remind all of us that during last year, I must say, October, we had a rezoning that was tabled in Mr. Sebula's district, I do believe, and folks that had spoken at the public hearing that was closed came back for the next meeting to speak, and they were not allowed to speak, and not one member of this board asked for the bylaws to be suspended. So, my point is, if we're gonna do it for one, we're gonna do it for all, no issue. If a public hearing is a public hearing, it's in our bylaws. No issue is different than the other issue, and everybody has the right to speak. And so, if we're gonna start doing this, we might actually want to take a look at our bylaws and see if we even want to have those bylaws. Thank you.
Mr. Yakubowski, I agree with you, and I would recommend that we bring it to the next meeting, we amend our bylaws potentially, or at least have for discussion. Mr. Skinner?
I'm gonna read a, I think we have asked the, this is coming from our county attorney. I'd like to, when limiting speech, government must do so in a way which is viewpoint-neutral. It cannot disfavor some speech in favor of another, vice versa, and must consistently enforce any time, place, or manner restriction in a discriminatory fashion. So, the board must be considerate in enforcing this provision. To that end, if the board suspends the bylaws tonight, and if there is ever another instance whereby someone wants to speak on the matter, which has been the subject of a previous public hearing where no final vote has been taken, the board would have a hard time justifying not suspending the bylaws at that time and probably should suspend them so as not to be discriminatory. So, my point here is that I think we're opening the door. We've followed these bylaws the whole way, and we've done it, so now we're gonna change them completely if we do it tonight. I would not be in favor of doing that, not because people don't have the right, but we did hold that public hearing at Cortlande, and we opened the doors for everybody to speak at that time.
Any other comments? Mr. Sebula?
Yes, I would not be in favor of this. We've got a longstanding rule to our, our bylaws have been around for a long time. This has worked well for us. I agree with Mr. Skinner and the opinion that was being read. I, I'm not in favor of this, nor would I be in favor of changing the bylaws should that come to pass. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, call the question.
Four, yes, with Mr. Yakubowski, Mr. Sebula, and Mr. Skinner voting no. The motion fails.
The motion passes.
It needs two-thirds. Takes two-thirds to suspend the bylaws.
Oh, two-thirds to suspend, okay. So, therefore, you can only speak on anything other than the budget. So, Mr. Taylor?
Well, the budget and tax rates, that is, well, let me read the guidelines, please, for public presentations. I assume, Amy, we have some folks signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The guidelines for public presentations are as follows. Public presentations are an opportunity for you, the public, to present matters you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up for each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from you to the Board of Supervisors. They are not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the provided sign-up sheet, print clearly. Come to the lectern. When your name is called, clearly state your name, address, and voting district for our record. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you are speaking on your own behalf. You will have three minutes to speak, or state if you are speaking on behalf of a group, in which case you'll have five minutes to speak. Public presentations shall not be used to address matters subject to public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. Written comments are always welcome.
The first citizen signed up to speak is Erin Grant, followed by Baron Braswell.
Good evening. My name is Erin Grant, speaking for myself. I'm vice chair of the Spotsylvania County School Board, and I reside at 5 Appaloosa Drive. I understand, under the rules, I cannot speak to you on the budget tonight. I just wanted to make sure you all are aware of the correspondence the school board emailed to you last night. Make sure that you have a chance to look over it before discussion this evening on the budget. Thank you.
Baron Braswell, followed by Doris Stevens. Doris Stevens, followed by Michael Hirsch.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Doris Stevens, 10513 Bent Tree Drive, 22407, Cortlande District, speaking for I do apologize, this is on the animal shelter and the budget. Is that acceptable?
Unfortunately, four members of the board said you cannot because we discussed it and it's part of the budget.
Thank you.
Michael Hirsch, followed by Janet Benello.
Mr. Chairman, Reverend Michael Hirsch, 200 McConkey Street, Fredericksburg, Virginia, 22401, speaking for the Fredericksburg, Virginia Patriots. One of our core principles is the rule of law. After consulting legal counsel regarding your bylaws revised February this year, Section 4, subsection E, public presentations governed by the following rules. Rule 8, there shall no pub, there shall no comment, public presentations on a matter that has already been the subject of a previous public hearing where no final vote has been taken. We are calling for you to strike Rule 8 as it is an abridgement to the freedom of speech. Also, bringing to your attention your own March 8th Resolution, paragraph 1, sentence 2. We encourage our fellow citizens to communicate their views on any subject pertaining to government policies, decisions, future plans, and, you said it, potential votes. This is in contradiction to Rule 8. Mr. Yakubowski's March 8th Resolution cited a single incident during citizens' public presentation time, leaving no doubt that Dale Swanson was retaliated against for views expressed. Legal counsel has advised us to inform you of the Code of Virginia, Chapter 31, State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, Section 2.2, 3103, prohibited conduct. No officer of a government, local governmental agency shall, ten, use his public position to retaliate or threaten to retaliate against any person, against any person for expressing views on matters of public concern or for exercising any right that is otherwise protected by law, and Section 3120, knowing violation of a chapter, a misdemeanor, any person knowingly violating any provisions of this chapter is guilty of a Class 1 misdemeanor. A knowing violation under this section is one in which the person engages in conduct, performs an act, or refuses to perform an act when he knows that the conduct is prohibited or required by this chapter. Now you know retaliation is prohibited. Our 10th core principle is accountability. This board is accountable to the rule of law, and claim will be brought should any seated member or by resolution the board seek to retaliate or threaten such. Reading the same sections, Rule 11, the second sentence, public comments shall not be used to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. A case involving a virtually identical resolution concluded that they violated the right of free speech. In BACH, addressing a resolution against, quote, "attacks or accusations regarding the honesty, character, integrity, or other like personal attributes of any identified individual or group," the district court had no difficulty finding that resolution an unconstitutional attempt to censor viewpoints the board disliked. In Mesa, the 10th Circuit Court has held, quote, "The Constitution protects the ability of all persons to speak their mind about public commentary, even when what they have to say is unkind," end of quote. In New York Times, the Supreme Court stated, "Our Constitution reflects, quote, 'a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that they well may include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks.'" While Mr. Skinner objects to vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks, this board may not abridge free speech by demanding removal of speakers exercising their right. The Patriots courteously remind the board that it is your duty to listen to your constituents, not silence them. Should a claim be brought in suit, video and documentary evidence, along with the testimony will abound to remove any doubt that retaliatory and unconstitutional acts have occurred. Amend Rule 8 and remove the abridgement of freedom of speech. Now I'm going to do what I'm going to do willfully. We request the advertised rate be lowered to the equalized rate of 83 cents to fund the recommended budget. We recognize this comment.
I would just remind speakers that we're not allowed to discuss the budget at this budget work session.
I have unwisely voted not to suspend Rule 8 for this session. Under Rule 9, we humbly ask, please, bring these issues to your next agenda, correct them, and restore liberty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peace be with you, and God bless you all.
Janet Benello?
Janet Benello, I live at 16,000 Carrington Court in Mineral, Virginia, in the Livingston District, and I want to take this time to thank Supervisor Benton for one of his goals, to bring physical responsibility, transparency, and accountability with online posting of the budget by department line item. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing that.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak?
Has anyone signed up or failed to sign up and like to speak now? Scallier?
Mary Lou Callier, Mr. Skinner's district. I know that there's a flushing of the water hydrants in parts of Spotsylvania, and I, on behalf of, I know a lot of us are grateful that we don't have a Flint, Michigan issue with our water here in the county, but whatever that we can keep on top of our water to make it able for us to drink and use and not get sick is most appreciative.
We request the advertised rate be lowered to the equalized rate of 83 cents to fund the recommended budget. We recognize this comment.
I would just remind speakers that we're not allowed to discuss the budget at this budget work session.
I have unwisely voted not to suspend Rule 8 for this session. Under Rule 9, we humbly ask, please, bring these issues to your next agenda, correct them, and restore liberty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, peace be with you, and God bless you all.
Janet Benello?
Janet Benello, I live at 16,000 Carrington Court in Mineral, Virginia, in the Livingston District. And I want to take this time to thank Supervisor Benton for one of his goals, to bring physical responsibility, transparency, and accountability with online posting of the budget by department line item. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing that.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak?
Has anyone signed up or failed to sign up and would like to speak now? Collier?
Mary Lou Collier, Mr. Skinner's district. I know that there's a flushing of the water hydrants in parts of Spotsylvania, and I, on behalf of our, know a lot of us are grateful that we don't have a Flint, Michigan issue with our water here in the county. But whatever that we can keep on top of our water to make it able for us to drink and use and not get sick is most appreciative. Two, the school security officers, I hope that you will look into increasing the numbers in the years to come. It can't be overemphasized, an officer, police officer in the schools, middle school, is a double plus. Some students think of an officer, they can trust him, and they can go to him and tell him if there's a problem they've overheard, or if they have a problem they want to discuss. Two, some people may be scared of a police officer, but that's good in a way. Those that want to do, students that want to do something not right, will see that police officer and think twice. That crime doesn't pay. And three, I am forever grateful for the improved public safety in the county, especially what was observed today, what the officers providing on-the-spot emergency care. Seven years ago this month, my husband passed away of a heart attack. He probably well may have been still living if we had the advancement that we see today. And all I can say is, support them in every way you can in allowing that the public safety police officers are trained and have the proper equipment with them to help maintain survival of someone that's on a medical alert. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, let's move on.
That brings us to the VDOT report, and I see that Mr. Nelson is here with us.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Here to provide you your monthly update. First, I'll start with Mr. Yakubowski in the Battlefield District. The Route 628 Smith Station Road and 208 intersection project has been advertised, and then we're waiting on the awards to come back. The construction should start this summer. I'll go to Mr. Sebula next. You had an inquiry to request the review of a drainage concern along Marie Road. We've made drainage improvements in that area of concern, hopefully have alleviated that issue. There was also a review of a drainage concern at the corner of Marie and Stanfield. We flushed the pipe, and the pavement has been patched, but we're going to need a pipe replacement at that area. There was also a request to review multiple potholes on Arcadia Road and Marie Road, and we patched those areas on the 14th, but as they continue to come back, we will continue to patch. Mr. McGlaughlin, there was a request to perform a safety study on Orange Plank Road from Route 3 to the Orange County Line. We just finished that study, and a draft has been forwarded to the county to review before we finalize it. Mr. Ross, there was a request for you to look at potential changes on Route 3 that we had talked about in the Transportation Committee. We're looking at those right now and trying to come up with an assessment to determine if we can safely do it and how much it would potentially cost. Mr. Skinner, there was a request for us to look at trees along Mine Road. We've removed some of the trees, but we're going back out to discuss some larger trees with the Park Service and our district roadside manager will be along to assess those trees also. There was also a request to review the feasibility of a crosswalk at the intersection of Todd Water Trail, Glendis Way, and Briarwood Lane. We're thinking we can accommodate that after the fiscal year, which would be after July.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sean, I just want to thank your people for doing that. I mean, there's so many people out there that see these things that might fall over, and I know it's an act of nature when they do fall off and kill somebody, but I think it's important that we sort of think ahead on this, and knowing that a tree could fall and kill somebody, we shouldn't wait to make it actually happen. So, again, I appreciate what you're doing, and thank you to act so quickly on it, too. So, thank you again very much.
Thank you. Mr. Benton, there was a request for us to review drainage concerns on Daysbridge Road. We had replaced that pipe a few years ago. The pipe is in good condition. We had to patch it or tough it because it had begun to settle a little bit where the backfill was at. There was also a request for us to review a drainage concern on Smith Station Road between Hollybrook Drive and Cobblestone. I went out and looked at that. I think there's a drainage easement there, so we're going to verify that it's a drainage easement and determine who's responsible it is to rectify the issue. Mr. Trampy, there was also, I have an update for you on the 620 Harrison Road project. We're planning to have our partner dust meeting on April 27th for that project, and it should be starting sometime in May. So, there will be a partner dust meeting on April 27th at the Knights of Thaas Hall from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. There was a request in your area for us to review drainage concerns along Piedmont Road. We looked at that today, too, and we feel that that's another drainage easement, but we're going to have to verify on the subdivision plan to determine who is responsible for that drainage easement. And then we had some issues that we're working on for county administration. There's two pedestrian crosswalks that we're working on. The first is on Route 3 at Harrison's Crossing. We're hoping to have that project complete by August of this year, and we're working on the Route 17 pedestrian accommodations at Germana and Hospital Drive, where we're going to install a crosswalk, but we're having to do some sidewalk there first. So, that should be coming within the next couple of months. As far as maintenance concerns go, the department, we're working on drainage concerns throughout the county and patching potholes as they come up, and we'll be doing our primary mowing and litter pickup, and that should be completed before Memorial Day.
Okay. Mr. Sebula?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think a lot of the people out there would like to know the answer to this question, and I think it's going to be a good answer. Hopefully, it's going to be a good answer. That is the completion of the work at Route 1 Mud Tavern Road. It's forecasted for June. It looks to me like we're going to be done early. I would like you to confirm that.
Yes, we are. As long as the weather stays the way it is, and we don't have any rain days, hopefully we'll finish that before, by next month. So, we're pushing that way.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? So, Sean, just real quick, I know, I'm going to say you're going to start doing some work on Old Plank this year. Was that, is there a little bit of paving going on?
Yeah, there is some, really some paving schedule work that is going to be on Old Plank.
Is there a way to look at or see what the cost may be to actually start expanding, at least putting some shoulder, at least on one side of Old Plank? You know, and even if we have to do it as a piece at a time?
I think we've talked about that multiple times. I think it depends on how it is funded, so we can have that discussion.
So, we'll take a look at it and see what it might take, because that is a, it's a problem, because you're either on the road or in the ditch, and that's usually a...
As many secondaries are in the county.
Right, right. Any other comments, questions? Thanks.
Thanks.
Next, Mr. Chairman, brought back for vote is CA 15 003, the United Unified Fee Schedule for Land Use and Building, and Wanda Parish is here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. May I have the floor computer, please? Last month, the board held a public hearing on the Unified Fee Schedule for Land Use and Building, and the board asked staff to implement the fee schedule over a four-year period. That's because in 2010, when the fees were last adopted comprehensively, most of the fees were adopted at 80% of cost, and this four-year schedule would bring them to 100% of cost. So, what you see before you is a fee schedule with the current fee in this column here, the July 1 fee, and then continuing each year through 2017 through 2019, on July 1, a plan to implement that 80% to 100% fee change. The one exception to this is the planning fees. In 2010, the planning fees were adopted at 100%, so the proposal is to adopt those in 2016 at the advertised rate and that they remain constant over the four years.
Do we have any comment? Any comment on the schedule? Is there a motion?
A move.
You have a motion? Call the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to the budget work session. Mary Sorrell and Bonnie Jewell are here with us.
May I have the floor computer, please? Okay, we're here for the final budget work session for fiscal year 2017, and this is adoption of the fiscal year 17 budget, CIP, and tax rate. So, what we have tonight, and we shared this with you on Friday evening, are a number of scenarios based on the conversation at the last boardwork session last Thursday. What you're going to see coming up on these slides are scenarios at 83, 84, 85, and 86 cents. What is common to all of those scenarios is the information that's on this slide. It includes the revenue adjustments from March 8 and 31st, which are the first two items there on the ongoing, in the ongoing column. Expenditure adjustments from March 8 and March 31, and then the adjustments we provided you at the fiscal year 16 mid-year report of $2.5 million, and that $2.5 million is one-time money. The total fiscal year 17 impact of the adjustments is an addition of available funding of $4.2 million in ongoing money and $2.5 million in one-time money. Also pertinent to each of the scenarios that you're going to see here after this slide are these, are these items. There is a reduction in ongoing fiscal year 17 revenue at any rate below 86 cents. There's an increase in one-time fiscal year 16 revenue at any rate above 83 cents due to the tax rate impacting the June 5, 2016 bills, and the June 5, 2016 bills and payments are fiscal year 16 payments. There are changes to the fund balance stemming from the changes in each penny, and those are applicable to the Fiscal Stability Reserve and the Budget Stabilization Reserve. And the, the model that we have to work on tonight and the scenarios that we're providing you here are automatically calculating what those need to be based on the changes in the pennies and other revenue. Based on Mr. Yakubowski's comment and no objection at the last meeting, the scenarios that you'll see tonight include use of $250,000 from the EDO fund balance for an EDA grant program. That would leave, use of the $250,000 from the EDO fund balance would leave $206,000 in that fund balance. So, the first scenario is the 83 cent scenario. On each of these scenarios that you're going to see, for 83, 84, 85, and 86 cents, the first line is the same on each of them, and it is the $4.2 million in ongoing money and the $2.5 million in one-time money that was on a few slides prior to this one. At the 83 cent scenario, there would be a three penny reduction to the numbers that have been provided to you through now, since the recommended budget assumed 86 cents. That would be a reduction of four, a little over $4 million. There would also be a change in the amount that needed to be set aside for this Fiscal Stability Reserve and the Budget Stabilization Reserve of $491,000, and that is one-time money, so you see it in the far right column. There would be a use for items from the April 7 meeting, and those items include an increase to the United Way of $1,000, increase in Powerhouse by $3,000, increase Social Services by $3,000, increase the contribution to Tri-County by $1,500, increase the Lake Anna Civic Association by $1,000, increase the library funding by $2,000, a base adjustment to the budget for the United Way request, which was $3,000 that I neglected to put in the budget originally, so that is, that is an error we made that needs to be included. Reconciliation of the error needs to be included. Funding for conversion of two part-time positions to full-time in the Treasurer's Office, funding to the Treasurer's Office for postage and printing, and pay parity for fire and rescue battalion and division chiefs and captains. The next line is the transfer to the Capital Projects Fund and equivalent debt service reduction. This is saying that we are going to use $2.4 million of the one-time column, one-time funding in the right-hand column, and it is going to save us about $400,000 in debt service in the ongoing column. The next line item uses available funding for employee retention for those employees, those county employees with four or more years of service, given that, based on analysis done by the Human Resources Department, between four and five years is where we start seeing, where we start seeing people leaving, and there's a concern about retention there. So, that is $437,500. And then in the 83 cent scenario, we would use $10,000 to increase the transfer to the schools beyond the $2.7 million that's already included in the base. We would decrease the transfer to the Capital Projects Fund, and that's formula-driven by $38,000. And again, as I noted on the previous slide, a transfer, a use of one-time money for economic development of $250,000. That's $250,000 to the Economic Development Department, not to the EDA. That's the 83 cent scenario. The 84 cent scenario, again, the first line is the same in each scenario. Two cents is reduced from the originally recommended 86 cents, and you can see there the impact of the ongoing and the one-time funding. You can also see the change in the Fiscal Stability and the Budget Stabilization Reserve necessitated by that change in revenue, and then again, the same number for the use of items that I read through from the last meeting. The available one-time money of $2.9 million is transferred to the Capital Projects Fund to reduce debt, which in turn reduces ongoing debt service of about $480,000. The use for employee retention of four years or more of service is increased in this scenario to $700,000, and that's about a 2% increase as compared to the previous scenario where it was 1.25%. The transfer to the schools is an increase of $1.1 million in this scenario, above and beyond the 2.7 included in the recommended budget. And there is an increase in the transfer to Capital Projects Fund, again, based on formula, of $4,813. The final line remains the same in all scenarios. It's $250,000 to the Economic Development Department through use of one-time funding. At 85 cents, there is a one penny decrease from the 86 cent recommended budget. You can see there the reduction in ongoing funding and the availability of one-time funding, and the change in the Fiscal Stability Reserve and Budget Stabilization Reserve. The use for items from the last board meeting remains the same, $200,000, and this with, with a one cent reduction, which is a two cent increase over the equalized rate, we have available funding of, we have available one-time funding of $3.45 million that is, in this scenario, used to offset the upcoming bond issuance, which reduces ongoing debt service savings of $562,000. The use for employee retention for people with four years of service or more to the county is, but is included at $1,050,000 in this scenario, and that's a 3% salary increase. There's a use of, or an increase in the school's transfer of $1.45 million. Again, that's in addition to the 2.7 in the base. There's an increase to the Capital Projects Fund, and also in this scenario, there is a transfer of $700,000 to the Transportation Fund to begin trying to help the out ears of the Transportation Fund, where we have repeatedly talked to you about the fact that we're going to have a problem in the near future in that fund if we continue the CIP as planned. And finally, again, the $250,000 to the Economic Development Department. And finally, again, the $250,000 to the Economic Development Department. The last scenario is the 86 cent scenario. The first line here is the same as it has been in each of these scenarios. There is no change to the ongoing revenue. There is a change because of the one-time funding that will happen in fiscal year 16 of $2 million in the one-time column. There's no change in the fiscal stability and budget stabilization reserves because the figures that we've already factored in when we gave you the mid-year report assumed the recommended 86 cent rate. So there's no additional change tonight. The use for items from the last meeting remains the same. This scenario allows us to have nearly $4 million in one-time funding to apply to Capital Projects, which then gives us a 644,000 dollar savings in debt service. That's an ongoing savings. And use, again, of a 3%, thank you, employee retention compensation adjustment for people with four years or more service to the schools. Excuse me, four years or more service to the county. The use of funding, of ongoing funding is $2.1 million for the increase in the transfer to the schools above and beyond the 2.7 million included in the recommended budget. And an increase to the Capital Projects Fund and to the Transportation Fund of $1.48 million. Most of that, $1.4 million of that is transferred to the Transportation Fund. And the final item is, again, that $250,000 to the Economic Development Department. Included in the scenarios that you received on Friday and also tonight is a pick list, and we have numbered that pick list so that hopefully that makes it easier for us to discuss what you want to include in the budget. These are all items that were discussed, or at least mentioned, at the last budget work session. And we have answered some questions that allowed us to put some numbers towards some of these, including the first two there, which are an increase in the tax relief income threshold from $50,000 to $60,000. The impact on revenue would be a decrease of $100,000. So that's the impact there. And that actually should say negative. There should be a negative there. The increase in net worth criteria, for each $15,000 change in the, excuse me, for each $25,000 change in the net worth criteria on tax relief impacts the budget by $15,000, a $15,000 loss in revenue. There was a conversation about removing one CPS worker. This number shown here is actually two CPS workers, so one would be half of that. There's an increase. If we increase the B-Pole threshold to $1 million, there would be a loss in revenue of $150,000. If instead we increase the B-Pole threshold to $1.2 million, there would be a loss of $240,000 in revenues. Each 1% compensation adjustment for the county is $543,000. 2% is already factored into the recommended budget. If we were to close convenience sites four days per week, that would be a reduction in expenditures of $312,000. The landfill at Livingston will remain open every day. This closes the convenience sites. We would, if we were to reduce the transfer to the Capital Projects Fund from the 3.2%, 3.25% policy requirement for this year, if we were to reduce that percentage to 3%, that would be a savings of $620,000. It would also require the board to amend its policy. Removing one senior accountant from the budget saves $104,000 in expenditures. Removing fire and rescue logbooks saves $400,000. Eliminating the Sheriff's Office dive team reduces, excuse me, $400, sorry. Eliminating the Sheriff's Office dive team saves $18,500. Eliminating fire and rescue dive team, and it would be one or the other, not both, would save $50,650. Replacing one full-time fire and rescue logistics person with two part-time people would save $853, but would have other consequences that I'm certain the fire chief would be interested in telling you about. Remove the Virginia Sheriff's Association dues, that would save $8,900. Reduce Sheriff's Office training. We don't have a number applied to that because it would vary depending upon how much training you want it to remove. Remove Sheriff's Office Career Ladder Program initiative. That would remove $60,582 from the budget. And that was already included only as a half-year initiative to begin with. So just so you know, that wouldn't begin until January 2017, as originally planned. Increasing the planning commission payment from $400 a month to $1,000 a month would cost $54,000. Eliminating three positions added for Company 11 would cost, would save, excuse me, $196,000 and would require us to add back Company 11 overtime of $87,000. Each 1% compensation adjustment for the schools is $1.7 million. And then finally, adding a $2,000 stipend for paramedic certification for 60 paramedics would cost an ongoing amount of $120,000. And that concludes the presentation, and we'll be glad to entertain any questions that you have.
Mr. Trampy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try not to take too much time. Many in the public may not have been aware that we were asked to make most of our decisions on Thursday. And it was for good reason. The finance staff has to make sure that all these moving parts mesh together and work together, and that takes some time. In fact, I don't think we narrowed down things as much as the staff would have liked and created some more work for them. However, since most of the public probably was not aware that we were making important decisions on Thursday, I wanted to explain why I cannot support the 83 cent scenario, which is in front of us, even though that was the tax rate I had been supporting. The board voted down my, the 83 cent scenario, which I offered last Thursday. I'm not complaining, majority rules. But I want the public to understand why I can't support the 83 cent scenario that's in front of us. Can we bring up my brief PowerPoint? It's only three slides, so I'm trying not to take too long.
Floor computer, please.
Let me first mention that the PowerPoint was actually put together by Mr. Ross. I say that partly to give credit where credit is due and also because I don't, I'm not in the habit of calling myself doctor. So I wanted to mention that that was Mr. Ross. If we go, yeah, the next slide. A little bit of an expansion on what I said, that we were able to do more at the equalization rate this year than we have in a long time. So why are we choosing this year to raise taxes? I wanted to expand on that, and I hope I'm not breaking any confidences. But what happened the last several years essentially was the county administrator proposed a budget with level funding for the schools, or last year, below-level funding. And I went in to sit down with him and said, "We've got to find some money for the schools." And the first thing we said was, "Let's eliminate all the new positions on the county side except for new firefighters." And that's where we started. We don't have to, we're not doing that. Even if we were at the 83 cent, an 83 cent scenario, we wouldn't have to do that this year. My proposal did eliminate one of two senior, or would have eliminated one of two senior accountants and one of two new social workers. However, there still would have been 8.7 new FTEs on the county side. And that doesn't count the 24 firefighters who are already employees of the county but who we have not been paying for. Nine of them were paid for by the Department of Homeland Security before this. And the rest were just recent hires, so we didn't pay for them for the whole year. I want to comment on, or reiterate what I said on Thursday about the change in the reserve fund. My proposal was a middle-of-the-road proposal between what we passed in November and what we had been doing before that. Prior to last November, for a dozen years or so, the policy had been 10%, we save in reserve 10% of the next year's revenues. So this year, that would be FY 2018. In November, we changed that to 11%. My proposal would have changed it to 11% of this year's revenues. And since, so my proposal was less restrictive than what we did in November, but more restrictive than what we've been doing for the last dozen years. So I wanted to make that clear. On the convenience centers, I've noticed comments on Facebook which suggested that I exempted the one nearest my district, which is Harrison Road. That is completely untrue. Not sure how that got out there. If we go to the next slide. As per the finance team's numbers, the change in cash to CIP at 3% instead of 3.25, I was high on that number by about $200,000. My, at 83 cents, we have less revenue than at 86 cents. So since it's a percentage of revenues, that's the sort of thing that the finance team needs to be able to figure out. That's why we were making decisions on Thursday. So would have been $200,000 less, but that would have still put us right at about $6 million increase in transfer to the schools. My proposal was not a take-it-or-leave-it proposal. I don't want to sound intransigent. My motion last Thursday was that we use my proposal as the base, and then the board could make changes from there. And I want to thank Mr. Ross and Mr. McGlothlin for supporting my motion. So I was open to changes, but what I wasn't open to was a completely reordering of the spending priorities. The 83 cent scenario we have in front of us has less than half that amount as an increase to the schools. And I'm open to changes, but I'm not open to changes on that scale. I think that's enough for the PowerPoint. In 2010, I was out there in the audience watching. And coincidentally, that year, the equalization rate was 83 cents. The county administrator's budget was at 86 cents. And Mr. Ross's predecessor, Jerry Logan, asked for a budget scenario at 83 cents. The scenario that he was provided did not cut new spending on the county side. It went into schools, took schools below-level funding. And he was understandably very upset at being cornered into essentially voting for that. So I will not support the 83 cent scenario in front of us, even though it's the tax rate I wanted, because I'm not going to be cornered into choosing among unpalatable options. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bonnie, could you bring up the floor computer, budget question 115? This has been a slide that we've talked about quite a bit, too. And in this, Dr. Trampy, I do thank you for putting that budget together, and I fully support it, and I have very similar feelings to you on that. And one of the comments made is, "This is one of the best fiscal years we've had. Why would we raise taxes this fiscal year and not others?" And this slide, I think, has influenced a lot of board members. So in the past, under scenario one, we haven't included the equalized rate, that 101%. So I think when we did, if you slide down just a little bit more, and this is the slide everybody's been looking at. Staff did provide, so you can see the deltas in what's forecast out in FY 2018, 19, 2020, and 2021. Staff in budget question 114 provided, not in a graph format, but in table format, the same slide of what we were looking at last year. And so in the first out-year, instead of seeing a negative 2.8, last year, we were looking at a negative 8.7. And the second, you're looking at, instead of 4.9, you were looking at a negative 18.9. And instead of an 8.3 in year three, you were looking at a negative 24.3. And instead of 11.1 in the fourth out-year, we were looking at a negative 29 million. So it was a much scarier slide last year. And yet, in your March review, I think we've come up with an additional $5 million based off of bringing in more revenue to the county than was forecast. In 2015, and I'm sorry, I don't have charts up here to kind of put side by side. But the first out-year, instead of negative 2.8 was 7.2. The second was negative 17.7 million. The third was negative 19.7 million. And the last was, instead of 11.1, was negative 22. And yet, that year, we had a $12 million surplus. So again, the point that I'm trying to make is that this slide that we're looking at, I've heard two board members say, "This really concerns them." And what I'm trying to share, if you look at the answer to budget question 114, this is up, this looks so much better than the past two years. In the past two years, we've had surpluses at the end of the year, in the millions of dollars. That's all I have.
Any other comments on 83 cent? So then I'm going to ask a couple of questions here on 83. So again, I haven't made it a secret that I did not support the establishment of the budget stability reserve at 1.25% of our county budget. And I did not support the increase from 10% fiscal stability reserve to 11%. So what that does, well, just to put it in, it cost, we put $4 million into the fiscal stability reserve last November, when we went from 10 million, or 10% to 11%. We created the budget stability reserve, where there was no requirement for that last year, at a cost, last year, of $4 million cash. And we took $1 million out of the 16 money to create the $5 million account. So Bonnie, correct me if I'm wrong. In order to maintain that, in the FY 17 budget, you had to budget about $2.8 million to fund the increases?
No, sir. The numbers tonight, there's nothing in the fiscal year 17 budget.
So '18, it'll be 2.8 million? So in order to maintain the new 2.25% reserves that we're putting in, the last meeting, you said it would be about 1.8 million for the 1% of the fiscal stability and about $900,000 or so for the...
That's for both reserves. It's the $2.7 million increase that came out of fiscal year 16's one-time money.
One-time, but we paid, we were paying the recurring fee in '17 out of one-time money from '16?
Yes.
Okay. But in '18, there's going to be probably 2.8, 2.9, $3 million bill to be paid in order to maintain that slope of the 2.25% increase?
Each year, as the revenue increases for the county and the schools, there will be an increase required for the reserves with the policies as they stand now.
Right. And approximately 2.8 and greater each year recurring.
I don't know how we would estimate what that amount's going to be.
Yeah, but it'll be somewhere in that neighborhood. Right. Assuming that the budgets increase at the rates we're increasing right now, we should see greater than $2 million increase every year. And my problem is, is that we've locked up $9 million in fiscal stability reserves or in additional reserves this year. And we're talking about raising taxes. 84 cents is 1.3 million. 84 cents, or 85 cents is 2.6 million, and 86 cents, 3.9 million. Essentially, we're raising taxes. If you go to the 85 cent rate, we're raising taxes to cover just the recurring cost of increasing the budget stability reserves. So we're taxing, we're taking money out of taxpayers' pockets, out of their savings account, and we're putting into the county savings account that's going to make, is it 0.5% interest rate, I think we got in the question came up, on short-term money, or is it long?
I think it was less than that.
Right. So we're making less than a half a percent. So we're making less than a half a percent on the $50 million. Or the money, the taxes we're taking out of your pocket, out of your savings account, we're going to put into the county savings account and make a half percent, just so we can say our budget and our fiscal reserves are higher than they were last year. There is no, that is bad fiscal policy, as far as I'm concerned, to tax the citizens to put money in a bank account. So what I'm trying to point out is, all this tax reserve is going to do in the future, it's going to be a recurring account, so any future pay raises, right off the top, instead of getting a pay raise, it's going to go to a fiscal stability reserve or budget stability reserve, as opposed to putting it where we need it today. So there's an opportunity cost we're missing by locking up all this money. One thing, we got a letter from the school board today, as a matter of fact, saying they could take $5 million, the 2.7 that's in the 83 cent budget, plus the $5 million of any type money, and that would satisfy their requirements for the year. Well, if we eliminate the budget stability reserve today, we could give the schools the 2.7 million they want, plus $5 million that we take out of the budget stability reserve, and we'd still have $900,000 more of recurring money that we could apply towards pay raises in the county. That's why I'm frustrated, because we don't need to raise taxes. We had a $10 million surplus last year. We had a $2.5 million surplus at the schools. That's a 10 cents on the tax rate, yet we're talking about raising taxes. That's not acceptable. And I don't even know why we're talking about 85, and 84, 85, and 86, when the 83 cent budget will cover everything we need if we eliminate these unnecessary savings accounts that's taking money out of your pocket. Any other comments? Mr. Yakimowski?
Oh, yeah, I got a lot. You know, and we have this argument, and I like to see the outside pressure groups who have dropped their, 86 is a tax increase and 83 is not. 83 is an arbitrary number that is called the equalized rate, simply that the government brings in the same amount of money, plus 1%. So it is not a tax, not a tax increase. It is a tax increase. And of that, let me just say that 53% of our taxpayers will be seeing an increase in their bills. And let me just read this off. This is attachment A, under FAQ number nine. Under the 83 cent rate, you'll have 5% that will see about $1 to $5 increase. And granted, 46% will not see an increase in their tax bill. But then you will see 4.3% that see between $6 and $10, 7.2 that will see between 11 and 20. 22.1 will see an increase of $21 to $50, and this is a yearly amount. 23% will see an increase of $51 to $100. 27.1% will see an increase of 101 to 200. 9.1 will see an increase of 201 to 500. And 2.4 will see an increase of 500-plus. Now, obviously, the 86 rate is, will increase those numbers, and I have made no bones about that whatsoever. But to get back to the argument that it is not a tax increase. Number two, I absolutely disagree with you, that having strong financial savings account, accounts, is a bad thing for the county. Because if that is, then I think we should put forward a proposal to reduce all of the savings accounts. Eliminate them, reduce them down. We had 8% back in the mid-2000s. Let's go back to that. I don't see those proposals coming forward. Another point that I would like to make, too, is, what this budget is really all about is, it is about choices, and how we are going to fund the services that are required. Number one, there is a huge lack of discussion when it comes to the transportation fund and the $2.8 million that is needed. I brought this up on Thursday, and I'm going to keep talking about it, because it seems nobody else will. Next year, $2.8 million has to come out of the general fund, back into the transportation fund. It is not a federal mandate, not a state mandate. It is something that this board, started by previous members, started taking money out, but yet continue to spend money. 2012, in the 2013 budget, I do believe it was, the tax rate was lowered below equalized, but yet, our public safety, which I agree with, our public safety budget increased continuously. And you saw the result of increasing that budget, as those gentlemen stood right before us and talked about the life that they saved. And for me, it's two core functions of government. It's public safety and public education. That is not to say that you write a blank check and let them do anything they want to. We are here, as elected officials, to have oversight. We've had a budget review committee that was my brainchild 10, 12 years ago. It was dismantled. It was brought back a few years back. That board has sat and looked over budgets, has come up with consolidation ideas that I think that we need to go after. But other than that, I have heard from none of them. A pot of waste that is sitting out there, places we can cut. We are down to cutting personnel. And if that's what we want to do, we can do that. I mean, we can transfer over to the schools a lot of money. I mean, we can, geez, we can transfer 20 million. Let's shut down the fire and rescue department. But we need to make wise decisions. And in my opinion, they're not wise decisions. And let me bring up one issue that came up two years ago. There were members of this board that sat up here and talked about removing funding from FRA, which is the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance, which is basically the regional economic development engine. There are a dozen or so throughout the state. And basically, when prospects come to the state, then the state works with our RAs throughout the state to find places for our, these newcoming businesses to locate. That was discussed two years ago. Let's exit out. We had a new guy coming in to take over, who I think has done an excellent job. It's $125,000, and I fought against getting rid of that, because I knew what it actually meant. So, fast forward a year, we had a couple of closed-session meetings about a business prospect. We had no name of what it was. We had no idea what it did. We knew it was international, and that was about it. The very first question the FRA, thankfully, who was still around, asked us was, is the county willing to put up $1 million in cash to match the governor's opportunity fund to bring this business here? And we said, yes, absolutely. We're willing to do that. If we were not part of FRA, we would not have had that opportunity, period. So choices that we make do have consequences, and there are direct effects from what we do. That business, by the way, the county then invested another $350,000, I do believe, and then another $700,000 roughly of infrastructure costs to bring Lidl to our county. So making wise choices, in my opinion, is what this budget is about. Cutting for cutting's sake, without looking towards the future and seeing what needs to be done, I don't think is wise. And having budget reserves, I think, is the way to go. I will say, I did argue last year, and I do believe it was October 13th was the board meeting, was, instead of putting all that $5 million in at once, let's do it over a three-to-five-year period. And another member said, no, let's, we have the money, let's just do it, and do it now, and that passed six to one. So we could go back and revise those guidelines. I'm not against revising the guidelines. I think that we need to make sure that we're not choking ourselves off simply to have a big budget reserve. But I do think that we need to work towards goals that will make our county stronger in the future, because we are working with the good decisions that have been made by previous boards, and the poor decisions that have been made by them. And when I get done on this board, I want to make sure that the majority, overwhelming majority of my decisions have been good for the county. Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to go into the schools, because we did receive that letter last night, and I want to make sure that everybody understands what the school is talking about. But I would like to talk about one thing before we go any further. And I know, Mr. Ross, you talked about risk and stuff of that nature, because it seems like we've got excess every year, okay? But I have to recall that when we were trying to bring a baseball stadium here, within five years, we were going to take a risk that we would be grabbing $6 million of income, revenue income, because of new property taxes that would be in here, which would have given us $6 million a year. $2 million of that would have gone to the debt service, and we'd had excess of $4 million to spend on education and public safety. And it was a risk, because that's exactly what the analysis showed us with the property that would come around the baseball stadium. And everybody said to us, well, that's a risk, and I don't want to take a chance on a risk with our things. And I think when we look at what we're going to do, just because we had an excess this year does not mean that we're going to have an excess next year. And I don't, I don't want to, I want to be able to pay our teachers, pay our county employees, if we have an economic downfall. So those are the type of things that, we're very fortunate that we have an excess, and we can put it, because then we don't need as much money. We do can carry it over. But if we're going to be talking about risk and not having them, then I want to be consistent in our decisions, risk-taking. As you know, right now, in the county, the county administrator's budget, he's budgeted for 2.7. And in the letter that we received the other night, it shows that in order to keep teachers and give the teachers the amount of employees, and they have gone. I mean, when you take a look at what we started, and I'd like to go over that real quick, is that in, I apologize, let me get my paperwork out here. When the schools originally got their budget together, in the very beginning, they were looking pretty close to $17 million and $3 million in debt, or trying to make up for it. Then obviously, after they did the edit of proposals, they brought it down to 13.9 million. And then we looked at what the state and every, the county was going to fund, and then additional local funds. So basically, to sum it up, they've taken it from 17.3 to 5.1 over the excess, or not in addition to the 2.7, okay? And what they've done, they're going to a 2.2% COLA for employees. And you've got to remember one thing there, too. If they're to receive the $1 million from the state, they've got to put up a matching $1 million in order to get that. And if we don't do that, then that means we're throwing $1 million away, okay, which would help with the, and that money that they give can only be used for teachers, employees, okay, for COLA. Originally, they asked for 47 full-time employees in cafe monitors. Now they're down to 14 full-time employees, which are very important, your two ESL and 12 special ed educations. I think what we've got to realize here is that we, as a board, don't get involved as much as a school board, but what you're seeing is, special education is really rising high in this county, because they do such a good job. Okay? So we've got to look at that. And there's non-compensation, if you take, that's 800,000. That is just be able to do things, is pay fees and stuff of that nature. So I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that we can do this. We can make this work out. But if we do not fund the schools as they need, they're going to be looking at some very important things. That's probably cutting positions. And it could even be as much as sending pink chips out to our current teachers. And I don't think any of us want that already. We've been through that during the recession, where what happened was, teachers would move on, we would not fill those bullets, and they've been working hard to get that back. And I remind you that many years ago, we had 20 children in an elementary school, we had 22 in middle school, and we had 26 to 28 students per class in high school. And we've gotten away from that. You can go to some of our elementary schools and find 30 to 32 children sitting in it. I think one of the most important things about education is that the first few years are the learning years, and establish your learning pattern in education. And we cannot deny our kids the best possible chance for doing that. And I think we can find the money around here, not to take away and still keep our budget for our county, okay? The only thing I would say is that the school can use both money. I know, Mr. McLaughlin, you said any time money. Well, it's going to have to, because they can only use so much one-time money, but it has to be recurring money, too, that they need in that there. So it's going to have to be a little bit of compromise there, is what we give them and everything. So I believe we can do it. I think one of the most important things, too, is that we certainly look at the parity between our police department and our fire, especially the chiefs and the battalion commanders out there, too. So just wanted to pass that on. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ross?
I just have to respond. Mr. Skinner, there was, the only risk of the baseball was that we were going to go over our debt capacity, and we're going to rearrange our CIP. Actually, that wasn't a risk. It was given. The risk was that it wouldn't pay for itself, and that we would have to either take services away, fire, safety, sheriff's department, or schools, or raise taxes to pay for public, for a private business to be here. So the numbers that I saw never, ever showed that that thing was going to do anything other than break even. So the risk was that it wouldn't. Arbitrary was just used, the word. I've looked it up. The definition as an adjective is "based on random choice or a personal whim," rather than "any reason or system." The word was used in describing the equalized rate. In mathematics, it's a constant or other quantity of unspecified value. The equalized rate is anything but arbitrary. It's a forecast of what the county will bring in next year, as 100% of the revenue this year, plus 1%. And yes, it does raise taxes on 46% of the people, so why should we raise it higher than that? This board, since 2012, has never passed a rate higher than the equalized rate, nor have we needed to. Our credit rating, AA+ is a great credit rating. I don't think anybody on this board is suggesting we throw away that rating. We've had that with the 10% reserve fund. We've increased it to 11% last November, because we had a surplus, and then additionally, another 1.25% for the other fund. This would be like having a credit score of 800, and trying to get that top score of 813. Being at the 87th percentile, say, with a credit score of 800 is very good. It takes a lot to go from that 800 to 813 tops, or it's extreme to say, just because we can't get to 813, and we're not going to try, that we should throw away our 800. And the last thing I'll just say, and this is probably more in our discussion, I would like to see that B-Pole threshold raised to 1.2 million, but reduce our transfer to EDA of the 250,000. So it looks like a fair trade-off. We just set aside $2 million for the EDA, and we can do this without affecting any cost or change.
Any other comments? Mr. Yakimowski?
If I can respond to that. We didn't set aside $2 million to EDA. We set it to the ED fund, which is not EDA. EDA is a separate organization of volunteers who work to bring business here and also grow business, which I'm very proud to have been going to their meetings constantly and find out the hard work that they do. And they are in the process of putting together a big grant program to help current businesses that are located here to expand and to grow. And if we want to not fund that, then that is the board's choice, of course, but I do believe that that is a worthy endeavor. When the word arbitrary was used, it was used to say that, in the context of a tax increase, as you had just agreed to, 83 cents is the tax increase, but not for 46, but for 53% of people. So my whole point throughout this whole discussion is to get away from these little taglines that are being used, and let's get down to the real work of the budget that we need to do. My whole focus has always been on spending. Are we spending on our core services as we need to? And when it comes to financial stability, we're AA+ with two rating agencies and AA with one. My only point is that if the only concern that we have is getting to a AAA, so that we can save money on interest rates, and it's only $600,000 over 20 years at the current rates, what are we spending to keep a AA+ and a AA? And if we were to go down in those ratings, would the inverse be correct with interest rates, that we would only be losing $600,000 or thereabout? For me, it's beyond a simplistic look at interest rates, and it's looking at the health and welfare of the county and its budgets. And to make sure that we are leaving a very healthy and strong system for the next board, and we all saw what happened in 2008, '09, and '10 with the budgets that just cratered and collapsed. And those were times, and that was when it, the money was taken out of the transportation fund, which still has yet to be addressed by this board, of how we're going to make up that gap next year. Yes, the numbers have come down. The estimations of revenue to expenditures was much larger in the out years. And yes, it has changed. But that is because of the good work of our people in the county and the schools. But that is because of the good work of our people in the county and the schools, and not because of policy that we have set. We basically have set an amount for them to spend, and when they don't spend that amount, that's not our good work. That's the applause that should be given to them for being a very conservative-minded group of people that is not wasting money. And so, when we look at the out-years, yes, transportation next year, 2.8 million, we have to come up with it. The likelihood, over the past couple of years, of having excess money from previous or the current budget on, is pretty good that we probably will have it. But is that any way to budget and to forecast? I disagree. I think that we need to take it directly on, and we need to start funding part of that. If not, next year is going to be an incredibly hard budget, and the schools who are here asking for 12 million will be here asking for 20 million, and we will be giving them even less. There's just so much, there's a finite amount of money. And if we do not start funding some of these issues, they're really going to come and grow, and eventually, when we have to do something, it is going to be something that we're not going to really want to tackle. Thank you.
I'm just going to address a couple of things, because there's just a fundamental disagreement. When you go from an 83 cent tax rate to an 86, everybody, taxes go up. So, that's a tax increase. So, you know, we can have difference of opinion, but when you raise taxes, you raise taxes. And again, I'm saying that we didn't need to raise our fiscal stability reserve. We had 10%. We've had it for, what, eight to 10 years now, and we've never reached the bottom. So, we did go from a AA to AA+ at 10, with 10%. So, I don't think anybody's taking risk with the county's money, because we have close to $40 million in reserve. And I think Mr. Yakubowski just said it himself, right there. We probably will have a surplus next year. If you assume we're going to have a surplus, why would we raise taxes? It doesn't make any sense. So, it's very frustrating for me at this point, to why we would continue to take money out of people's pockets when we have all of this cash sitting on the sideline, and nobody's came back and told us, you don't have enough in your reserves, you're in, the county's in jeopardy, it's not run well. That's just not an accurate statement. Any other comments?
Yes, sir, there are. Again, you're arguing that 86 is a tax increase for everybody. It is not. It is 70%. It is on all the documentation, if you would like to read, that says 70%. Yes, it will go up for. 83 is still for 56% of people. My argument has always been, to use the cliched phrase, in my opinion, of raising taxes, no tax increase, this is the tax increase, it's not. It's out of our hands. We can't do anything about it. When that one person opens up their bill and they're paying 50, 100, $200 more next year than they are this year, their taxes went up. Did we directly affect that? Assessments do that. We have no control over assessments versus tax rates. So, please, I would like to get to the funding aspect. And what I said, is it likely? It's likely, yes. Is it a guarantee? Is that the way that we're going to be doing our budgets from now on? Is that we hope next year there will be money, so let's just push it off? I mean, the schools have even undertaken their retirement funds to shore those up. I forget the exact acronym for all of that stuff, but you had extra money that was left over. Counties have even started to do that. So, you know, we can go through this argument of tax rates versus no tax rates. That's fine. What I want to get to is how much is the right amount to fund to make sure that in the future, we have good services? The schools, last year, got $17,000 in extra money. And they did get one-time money of roughly $3 million from the Massillon Church Road, which previous board had said to them, you guys want that school over there, you're going to be putting in the road, set aside money out of your budget to do it. And so, it didn't cost the same amount. They kept the money. That's one-time money that they could use. Yes, that was found money, but as far as ongoing money, it wasn't there. And then if you want to take a look at the school transfer and state transfers of the local transfers, starting in 2013, almost half a million. 2014 was 268,000. 2015 was 835,000, or I'm sorry, 835,000. And then last year was 17,000. You know, their costs do go up, and there are ways that we can save money by consolidation. And I would urge the school board at our next quarterly meeting to sit down and let's get to the crux of that so that we can make sure that we are not wasting money. We've actually already consolidated years ago with fleet management. Let's get a report on that. Did we save money? Was it a good idea? Was it a bad idea? Because just because you consolidate services does not necessarily mean you save money. In theory, it does, but the schools do a lot different than we do when it comes to HR, when it comes to legal and other purchasing and other things. So, if we can save money, let's do it. But there again, even if the total amount that I had heard from our previous county administrator was around $600,000 per year, which is half a penny on the tax rate. So, I say that we need to look at funding our core services and making sure that we're not losing fire and rescue folks, that we're not losing teachers, and that we are doing what we need to do to bring good businesses into the county. Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, a couple of things that I do want to bring out, and that is, as we look at the out-years, I've always said it's easier to adjust to 2, 3 cents raises than a 10, 12 penny raise. And here's just, last year, the schools didn't really have a big increase in their health rate. Matter of fact, it was pretty much level. So, what we gave the schools, they could adjust to at that one. But this year, it's gone up 11.8%, and next year, it's, will go up almost $2.8 million increase for fiscal year 18. So, if we're waiting to pay these as we get there, okay, and we're looking for excess, we've already got more money that they'll need next year that we can predict already, and that is from the VRS. And who knows what the health insurance is going to do, because there's really no control over it for anybody that can do it. They do whatever they want to, and we can't have control of it. So, I'd like to make sure that we're not ending, or putting ourselves in a position two, three years down the road where we've dug a hole, and I think Mr. Benton has said this earlier last week, is that we've got to start thinking about filling some of that hole back in so we get our head above water, one way or the other, and we don't find ourselves doing to the public. And raising it 8, 9, 10, whatever it might require. Because I believe if we keep going in the way we're doing it, that's exactly the way we're going to do it. Now, I do know, and I do want to bring this out, too, we did have a personal property tax raise of 39 cents one of those years. You all voted 39 cents personal property increase, and since that time, we've been trying to bring it down. Is that not correct?
Mr. Skinner, no. That was a, it was based on the equalized rate, and that goes back to what you believe was a tax increase.
So, you're bringing the...
It went below, well, you're talking about the previous one. It went below the equalized rate.
Well...
So, under...
So, you increased it by 39 cents?
The equalized rate. Below, the equalized rate was $7. It was dropped, but it was higher than the previous equalized rate.
But what I'm seeing is, our property owners saw an increase of 39 cents, and the first thing that I got called was, was my personal property and cars and everything else went up tremendously. And that's what I got calls from my constituents, because I do remember that there was a 39 cents increase in the personal property tax. And that caused everybody to react and say, wow, my personal property tax went up $250, $200.
Mr. Spillane?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've sat here for two years on this board, been through a couple of budgets, and I have to say to the public, I'm sick and tired of hearing about tax increase, tax decrease. What we've got is a county that we need to run just like we run our household, and I've said this ever since I've been on the board. If we want a flat-screen TV, we've got to have the money to pay for it. If we need to have a flat-screen TV, we better go out, if we don't have the money, we better go out and find a way to find that money and do it. That's called increasing revenue. If we have needs in this county that must be met, and we have a lot of them, we have them on the school side, we've got them on the public safety side, fire and EMS, we need to retain those people. We're losing them to surrounding jurisdictions. We need to provide extra, not extra money, but necessary money for the schools to get matching funds from the state, or we're throwing money down the drain. We've had a lot of comments here tonight, but bottom line is, we have got to manage this county like we manage a household. And that is, we borrow money when it's necessary, we raise taxes, a word I don't like to use, but we increase our revenue when it's necessary. If we don't need to increase the revenue when we've got surpluses, we put them into savings. And the bickering that we get back and forth is just, to me, totally unnecessary. I wrote a commentary for the newspaper on what I felt was necessary for this county to advertise a rate above equalized that was a sufficient enough rate that we could add things if necessary or not. Again, I say, the argument about increasing taxes is just, doesn't make any sense at all. And I think that the, our county administrator presented a budget that's a good budget. I examined it. It's things that we need, things that we need to do. He proposed that at an 86 cent rate. We've got a rate that, an equalized rate of 83 cents that would have been a totally wrong way to go had we not discovered some surpluses in the budget that would allow us to do his budget at an 83 cent rate. However, doing it at an 83 cent rate doesn't provide for all the things we need. So, therefore, I support a higher rate. Not ready to say what that is yet, but you'll see it when the time comes, because I don't think this discussion's closed yet. Thank you.
Mr. Spillane, I just want to follow up. When you wrote your article, the county budget was, county administrator's budget was 86 cents, and since after that, the additional funding was at 83 cents. So, the county's administrator's budget was satisfied at the 83 cent rate. The additional money after the fact is adding additional things back into the budget. So, the county administrator's budget was satisfied at 83 cents. Anything above that is putting additional money, whether it's for a road fund or whatever it may be. So, all I'm saying is that 83 cents satisfies the administrator's budget. Anything above that, you're adding things back into the budget.
That's, in fact, you are correct. I'm not arguing that point. But what we do need to add back in are, one thing that's very important, is the support for retaining our fire and rescue and sheriff's department employees, and also, and I'm not going to leave them out, is our regular county employees. Our attrition rate is not very good, and the local jurisdictions are coming up with salaries now that are big incentives for our employees to leave, and we don't need to have those employees leaving. And that's why I would ask for extra money in, not extra money, but money to fund those initiatives. Something like employees who are with the county in whatever position at four years, that they receive an increase in salary, a stipend to retain them. They don't get that if they're going to leave before then, or it could even be five years. They don't get that if they're going to leave before that period of time, and that would be an incentive to keep them. These are all things that we haven't discussed in detail, but these are some of the things that I'm addressing when I look at an 86 cent rate, and that, enough said.
Well, with that said, as I've been saying all along, if we vote to eliminate the budget stability reserve account, $5 million can be transferred to schools on top of the 2.7 million. That'll free up close to $1 million recurring money that can be used for those retention of employees or additional pay raise in different areas within the county, or pay for some of the turnout gear at the fire department or other things that are necessary. And you could still do all of that at the 83 cent rate. As we've all said, we anticipate surpluses next year. Why would we raise taxes this year? When we can cover all of the county's budgets at 83 cents, give the schools $5 million more, and potentially give the county employees and elsewhere an additional $1 million towards those salaries by eliminating the budget stability reserve, which we just created last November.
I disagree. Poor fiscal management.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to mention, you keep saying that the 83 cent fits the county administrator's budget. The problem is, it doesn't fit the school's budget, because Mr. Taylor was put in a position that he has to make decisions, what he gives to school and what he gives to county, and stuff of this nature. And that's what we're missing here. We've got requirements out there. Now, I understand your fiscal, the reserve that you're talking about, but again, that's a decision whether or not we're willing to take that risk. If we want to take that money and use it, what do we do if we really, because I understand right now, we got 45 days worth of reserve to keep this county running. Is that correct? On what we talked about, I think, last Thursday, was about 45 days?
We have seven weeks.
Seven weeks.
Seven weeks.
Okay, a little under two months. Okay. 37, 51 days.
Yeah. Mr. Skinner, I'm just going to point out that eliminating the budget stability reserve, which we added, we still increased the fiscal stability reserve by 1%. So, even eliminating the budget stability reserve, we still have increased our reserves in the county by 4%.
But we have not met what we really should be, that they're telling us that they recommend for the three months. Is that not correct, Bonnie? We're not reaching the recommended of three-month stability.
Correct.
And again, that is something that should be done. We did that when there was $10 million in surplus. We came up with a budget stability reserve and added a lot of this stuff in without, I think, doing a full analysis. Because what I'm saying is that once that 2.25% of the total reserves we added is going to add 2.5 to $3 million annually recurring to maintain that 12.5 or 12.25% reserves. That's the piece that's missing here. What are we going to give up in order to maintain that 12.25% reserves into the future? I mean, that's the 2 cent tax increase right there alone, just by trying to maintain those two reserves, which we hadn't had in the past. I'm not saying get rid of them all. I didn't say get rid of the 10%. We have currently. I'm just saying, let's go back to where we were, where the county was moving fine, we had enough in the reserves, and yet I think we're hurting ourselves by putting too much money in savings. So, if we eliminate the budget stability reserve, we'll still have essentially a 10% increase to our fiscal stability reserve at that 1%. And I think we could do it all at the 83 cent. And I think you could get consensus from the board then.
Well, as I said, I just want to make sure that when you say the county administrator's budget can be met at 83, but I, like I said, it's not the budget that will also fulfill the school's requirement.
Right. I agree with you. No, I agree with you. Mr., I mean, I'm just going back what he presented, but by going what I'm offering up adds $5 million more into the schools on top of the 2.7, 2.8 that the county administrator's already offered.
And I guess it just comes down to how many board members want to, you know, get rid of it or stick with it. That's why we're up here, seven different opinions. So, thank you, sir.
Well, that's correct. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Ms. Jewel, the budget stability fund was funded with one-time money. So, if we were to eliminate that and give that to schools, they would then receive one-time money that they would then need one time next year and one time the year after. It's called continuing money. So, if they could use 5 million of one-time dollars and never ask for us, from us, for another 5 million to fill those gaps, that would be fantastic, but that doesn't exist. So, eliminating that and giving it to the schools does not solve a problem. It kicks the problem down the road to next year, where we not only have now increased the bottom line for the schools, we now have emptied out our piggy bank. And so, they come back to us and ask us for money, and we say, well, first of all, you're not getting any. Number two, we don't have any to give you. And number three, we have a transportation fund that we still haven't funded, that's $2.8 million, that we need to fund, first of all, because we have spent that money. And so, giving that, getting rid of the fund or not getting rid of the fund, that's a discussion I'm willing to have, but to say that we can use that money to fill the gap and not raise taxes and keep it at 83 and do all this stuff, it just simply doesn't exist. And then secondly, if we really want to get rid of money, and we really want to go back to just what the core county services are, you would get rid of all of our transportation outside of VRE. VRE is a gas tax that the excess can be used for transportation issues. But everything above and beyond that, transportation is a state issue. I'm not advocating for that. I'm simply pointing it out, that the county has expanded its role into something that we not, we have not naturally had, nor is a responsibility of ours. So, that right there is roughly $3 million of ongoing funds every single year that a previous board has decided that we are going to spend, and this board has continued that, of going after matching funds from the state, of going after different funds that are out there. It was even just brought up... It was even just brought up of how do we fund other road improvements, which are definitely necessary. The state has failed, so the county has stepped up. Have we lost money in that endeavor? Overall, yes. It should be going to other core services, but decisions were made to do it, and I think the right decisions. So decisions on our financial stability package, which I would very much disagree and take, I will just disagree with, that it was not well thought out. I would say that our finance department did a very good job putting that presentation together. I went back and watched it, just to double-check on what I said, and it was very lengthy, very well in, in-depth, very well put together, and very well thought out. Whether we decide to do it or not, we're the policymakers, and we can do that, and that is fine, but it is a well-thought-out plan. The other thing, too, as I just mentioned, the schools have been putting money into the retired fund, or the fund for, do you have the?
The OPEB?
Thank you.
The other, the, yeah.
Right.
Other post-employment benefits.
Correct. And the county needs to do that at some point, too, and we have not done that. We don't even address that. We don't even come close to addressing that. So to say that all of our needs are taken care of, and everything else in the future will just fall into place somehow, I don't believe is, is the right way to do it. Those type of issues, the schools have, have started, and the county has not started. So yes, the county administrator's budget can be fulfilled at 83, but it's us, up to us to decide at the advertised rate if we want to do the county administrator's budget, and then something above and beyond. My budget proposal, again, has 2.5 million that goes to the schools. We pay off, or we use 3 million to, to then not, for short-term items, so that we don't have to bond any of that, freeing up about $400,000 to $500,000 in ongoing money. $230,000 of ongoing money goes to fire and rescue, as you heard the chief say, for a, for other positions that are very much needed, because they currently have one rescue supervisor. And then it also takes 1.4 million and thereabout to the transportation fund to, to settle, to, excuse me, to start settling that up, so that we don't have that hitting us next year. I, I would ask my fellow board members to consider all of this when we make our decisions. None of it is easy. If it was, you know, we wouldn't need to be here. We could just leave it up to staff, and they could plug in the numbers, but we're the ones that have to make the decisions, and it takes the majority of us to do it, and I appreciate the healthy debate that we're having. Thank you.
So Bonnie, I just want to point one thing. When I say that it wasn't well thought out, the first it was ever presented to the board was, I assume, October 13th. There was no, we never received a read ahead, so it was the first I got hit on it.
No, we, no, sir. We had at least two presentations about that. October 13th was when the policies were actually adopted, and there was at least one meeting prior to that.
Okay. And the other one, keep bringing up, Mr. Yakubowski, keep bringing up the 1.4 million, adding, what are we buying with that 1.4 million?
In the transportation fund?
In '17, what are we buying?
We're, we're paying back the money that we have taken out. It's due. We have.
To what, though?
To the transportation fund.
What is the transportation fund?
Transportation capital projects.
Right. So what are we buying with that 1.4 million that we put in, in the FY '17 budget? What are we buying with that 1.4 million?
We'd be using it to fund the debt service on the capital projects, for the transportation projects that are approved in the CIP.
Okay, so this is for debt service?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's, we're not buying any road projects, it's for debt service?
On the road projects that we're already buying, yes.
Right. So what are we doing at, the county administrator's budget did not have that in there, did it? Or did it?
County administrator's budget is not, there's no recommendation for changes to the county administrator's recommended budget for the CIP, for the transportation projects.
So how are we paying the debt service at the 83 cent?
Paying it with a combination of the fuel tax money that we get from being a member of the VRE, from a combination of the use of the transportation fund balance, and that use of the transportation fund balance, year after year, is why, beginning in fiscal year '18, we're going to have to have a $2.8 million transfer, or some other source of revenue, from the general fund to balance the transportation budget, transportation fund budget.
The debt service on it?
Debt service, and the other costs that are in the transportation fund, which includes the Fred Bus Service, transportation staff and benefits, our, our subsidies to PRTC and VRE. All of those things are in the transportation fund, and it is the, it has been routinely, since February 2015, or 2010, when we joined the VRE, it has routinely been a combination of the fuel tax and use of the transportation fund balance, which is one-time money that we have been using to fund those ongoing transportation expenditures.
Okay. Any other comments? Does somebody have a motion, or what are you going to move forward, or? I've, I've put a scenario up there, if somebody would like to make a motion on it.
Mr. Chairman, I have my scenario that was presented to the board and, and was detailed out with staff and Thursday's meeting. Again, it is an 86 rate, using the surplus money to fully fund the county administrator's budget, taking 1.4 million, transferring it to the transportation fund to fill the gap, 2.5 million extra to go to the school system, 232,000 to go to fire and rescue, and then a couple, a couple hundred, I'm sorry, 250,000 over to ED, and then the EDA. But to do all that, it needs an 86 rate. I am not asking to support this scenario right here, but I think that the one thing we should do is probably vote on the tax rate, and then everything sort of trickles down from there. And so I will propose to, to put forward an 86 cent rate.
Any comment on the 86 cent rate? We're not voting on your proposal, just.
Yes, sir. Correct.
Call the question. Wait, hold.
No, that's, that's fine. I just wanted, I, I will support an 86 tax rate, because I think it's, it, it's a future. We're looking into our future, what we have to do, and I truly believe raising the tax rate, if, whatever you want to say, but the 3 cents are going to be a lot easier to absorb than in the future, when we keep putting things off and not doing what we really should do, as Mr. Spiel has said, you know, let's, if we can't afford it, we don't buy it, but we have to, and as Mr. Yakubowski says, let's look at where our spending goes, and stuff of that nature. But I will certainly support the 86 cent tax rate, especially to support our schools.
Okay. And the. Call the question.
Three yes with Mr. Ross, Mr. McLaughlin, Dr. Trampy, and Mr. Benton voting no.
So do we have any further discussion or motions? Mr. Benton?
I'll just say, I, I can go ahead and recommend a rate, and I, just before I do that, I want to make a little comment. Now, I've, I've tried to exclude myself from any kind of pressures all the way around. I've tried to basically take myself out of being employed by the county. I've tried to basically just put myself as a taxpayer, which I am, and go through this with the help of finance, of course, and gone through all these numbers, and I can't tell you how many hours I've put in here. Be quite honest, I haven't had a whole lot of conversation with either, any board member. I've met a couple times, very brief discussions, but I've tried to do this all on my own, basically, going through everything, and not only representing Livingston, and it's, and my neighbor's there, but the county as a whole, and the needs there. I would just say briefly, I, I've been through these numbers a million times, and the more we meet and discuss throwing, taking pots of money here and there, and trying to get by, the more my decisions were made. You know, we're all individuals here. I agree and disagree with each and every single one of you on various topics, as you probably, I'm sure, do me. And we can, you know, we can debate every topic on here, probably, every single time we meet, and for days on end. But I have tried to make a very educated, knowledgeable decision that hopefully is best for the schools, the county, and the county residents. And I understand that some out there are, are at wits' ends as far as what they are able to pay. And I don't take this decision lightly. I have definitely lost sleep on it, but I, I can support, I would like, make a motion to have an 85 cent tax rate.
Any comment on the 85 cent?
Oh, yeah.
You've not read it yet?
Forgot, yeah.
Comment from Mr. Benton?
Hadn't made my disclaimer. I technically, I technically have an interest in the budget transactions as a county employee. My disclosure is on file with the clerk's office, and for anybody wishing to view it, it's, it will be there.
Is there any comments on the motion for an 85 cent tax rate? Call the question.
Four yes with Mr. Ross, Mr. McLaughlin, and Dr. Trampy voting no.
So now, Mr. Skinner, now we got to decide what, that was just a rate. Now the question is, is what's going to be in that rate? Any comments on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trampy.
I think we pretty much have to start with the 85 cent scenario as provided by staff and, and go from there, make any adjustments.
Comments?
Bonnie, could you go, once again, let's, now that we've worked on 85, can you go over that scenario with us, and so we, we fully understand what we're getting there? Or what you, what your proposal is with that?
Excuse me, Mr. Skinner. I just pointed out, it's time for public presentation. Could we hold off and come back to this question after we have public presentation? So, Amy?
There are no citizens signed up to speak.
Anyone in the audience that would like to speak, that had not signed up, but you can't speak up about the budget? Anything? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the, Mr. Skinner's question.
Let me try to transfer this file from my computer to the floor computer. Just a second.
While you're pulling that up, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. While you're pulling that up, we're going to take a 10-minute recess.[179.21]
Personal property and the last year was at 500,000, Ronnie? Or the forecast?
For the last three years, it's averaged 500,000.
500,000, and I know we're reducing it a little bit here, but I would like to propose that drop this rate down to $6.49, another dime.
We have a substitute motion for 649. Any comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. First of all, that would be another $600,000 out of the budget, which I disagree with. Number two, there is a lot of talk about equalized rate, and so just to let folks know, the equalized rate for personal property is actually 691. So at the current, 659, it is 32 cents below equalized. So if we would like to jump it up to the equalized, which I know we can because of the advertisement, that actually would net the county another 1.9 million dollars. But having that below the equalized rate actually saves the average taxpayer on personal property around 40 to 50 bucks annually.
Mr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ross, did you have a thought for an offset on the spending?
No, I did not at this time.
Capital Projects. So we have a substitute motion to reduce it by 10 cents. So the tax rate is proposed at $6.49. Call a question.
Three yes with Mr. Yakubowski, Mr. Sebula, Mr. Benton, and Mr. Skinner voting no.
Mr. Benton?
We kind of went into this rather quickly. I was trying to do some numbers before we voted, but I guess I should have said, hold on. I was going to make an amendment for maybe 55. Take it down a little bit more, but not...
You can just make the motion now if you'd like.
I'll make a motion to...
Or a substitute motion, because the current one is, the motion was at 659.
I'll make a motion to bring it down to 655.
Any comment?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Skinner?
What are we losing with, is that...
$240,000.
And I'm going to ask the same question to you, Mr. Benton. Where do we replace that with, sir?
We got the EDA.
Don't think the EDA is worth it, then.
Not saying that, but I'd rather see it go to maybe a little bit more tax relief than...
Well, as we discussed earlier, that we would go ahead and vote on the rate and determine the actual, how we would spread the money out on the 86 cent or 85 cent earlier for the real estate, so we can actually do the same thing if...
That's fine. I just asked a question.
So there is a substitute motion. Mr. Yakubowski?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Average taxpayer, what does that save the average taxpayer on personal property?
Can you pull that spreadsheet back up, please?
Yes, ma'am. $63 a year, so $5 a month, dollar a week. Okay. I oppose that simply because, you know, if we're, again, it's, the rate is already 30, I'm sorry, 32 cents below equalized, averaging the average taxpayer 40 to 50 dollars. I just, I'm not sure what we're actually going to gain on that, so I would oppose it, not in principle, but in the reality of what it does.
Okay. There is a substitute motion on the table for the personal property tax rate of $6.55, correct?
Yes.
Call a question.
Four yes with Mr. Yakubowski, Mr. Sebula, and Mr. Skinner voting no.
The next item is the personal prop...
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman?
Hello?
Could I recommend to try to save some time and make it a little, go faster, that we vote on these on a, in a block, the advertised rates? And if there's any that a board member wishes to change from, you know, lower from the advertised rate, that you pull it out of the block? And one of them, I think, we need to pull out of the block would be, of course, mobile homes, which I think, you know, in precedent, we've always set it at the same rate as the real estate tax.
I think it's by state code that that has to be the same as your real estate.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other rates that we want to pull off this list, any board members?
Can you scroll down?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Any comments?
I'd make a motion to approve as advertised.
Any comment on that? Call a question.
Six yes with Mr. McLaughlin voting no.
Okay, may I have the floor computer, please? This may be difficult for the folks at home to see. We will post the resulting final scenario to our website tomorrow morning, but this is as large as I can make this and still allow me to be able to see what I need to see. So the items in orange are the, items in column X that are shaded orange. These are the things that we have gone over in previous work sessions with you. These will not change. It is the CSA and DSS revenue adjustments, the PSAP grant adjustment for the Sheriff's Office, reduction in revenue from the Compensation Board, the increase in revenue from real estate, personal property, meals tax, reductions in revenue on refuse disposal fees and recycling fees. And then this is the approximate million dollars that we've talked about a number of times as being now available in ongoing general fund money as a result of having funding available in fiscal year 16 that we have applied to fund the reserves. So this is part of the original 4.1 million dollars in available funding that we talked about on March 31st. This item actually should be highlighted orange as well, because that, we've talked about before, that's the 2.5 million dollars in one-time money that is available from the mid-year fiscal year 16 report. Because there is, there are 2 pennies adopted above the 83 cent rate, that new rate is going to impact the June 5th, 2016 tax bills, and as such, we expect a 1.3 million dollar one-time increase in fiscal year 16 revenue. So that is why that's factored there in the one-time. Because the 85 cent rate is 1 penny lower than the recommended rate of 86 cents, it reduces the available funding by 1.3 million dollars. So that is here. This is a formula that's factoring in the necessary fiscal stability reserve adjustment and budget stabilization reserve adjustment stemming from the changes in revenue that are here. And this is the, this one is the budget stabilization adjustment. This is the $240,000 decrease in revenue just resulting from the reduction of 4 pennies in the adopted personal property tax rate from that which was advertised. Moving down to the expense side, again, all the orange shaded things are items that we've talked about before, the jail and juvenile detention contribution reductions, adjustments to the court service unit budget, to the Sheriff's Office budget for radio repairs and travel, and then the adjustment having to do with paying for cash instead of bond funding, the public safety technology reserve, because we did receive a grant to fund that. That's a $24,000 savings. This initially, initially, there was a revised recommendation to fund the animal shelter scope of work at about $400,000, but then at the following work session, we came back and added that in. So this one, I don't know if you can see it, yes, this one and this one offset each other. That's a net zero change.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if we ask a question as we go through it?
Sure.
Real quick, so I understand. Go back to the animal shelter, please. I want to make sure we understand that. The 2.9153, we add it back in. That money is designated for design? Is that designated for debt service?
This, this is the debt service portion of it. What this does is the end result of these adjustments here keeps the fiscal year 17 budget for the animal shelter at 3.5 million dollars.
Okay.
Yes, this is only the debt service portion of it.
Right, of the 3.5 million dollars, and we could do 3.55, I think you said.
3.464, 3.5 million.
Okay, 3.5 million. Thank you.
At the last work session, we, we talked about adjustments being needed for fuel accounts in the general fund budget, and that was a reduction of 259,000 dollars. And we do realize that the fuel prices are going up, and we have factored in some increases there based on a generally accepted price index. There were other miscellaneous base budget adjustments of reduction of about 8900 dollars, and then the transfer to the Capital Projects Fund. This is a formula-based transfer that, based upon any increases in revenues above, this is calculating 3, this is actually supposed to be 3.25, 3.25 percent of that. Mr. Yakubowski had recommended at the last meeting at 86 cents, a 1.4 million dollar transfer to the Transportation Fund to be used for purposes of all the items we talked about before, debt service, Fred Bus, and the PRTC and VRE subsidies. Transfer to the schools started here at 1.3 million dollar additional in addition to the 2.7 that's in the base recommended budget, and this is our balancing figure. This is my balancing figure for purpose of this scenario. Obviously, you have the authority to do this however you choose, but when we just increased or decreased the revenue for personal property, I took that away here on this side, on the school transfer to balance. There is an available one-time funding we talked about before of 3.4 million dollars, and I am assuming that that one-time general fund money will be used to transfer to the Capital Projects Fund to allow us to reduce the amount that we borrow this summer, which will have a corresponding reduction of 562,000 dollars in ongoing debt service savings. So that's why these two are yellow. They match each other. There is included funding to convert the Treasurer's Office to part-time positions to full-time, and that's a $51,000 cost. There's also $29,000 to fund the Sheriff's Office postage and printing request. In this scenario, the 85 cent scenario, there is retention funding for employees with four or more years of service. These are county employees, $1,050,000, and that's 3 percent. There's pay parity for fire and rescue battalion chiefs and division chiefs and captains, $104,000. Then there are a number of increases to regional agencies here, a $1,000 increase to the United Way, a $3,000 increase to Empower House, $1,000 for social services, excuse me, $3,000 for social services, $1,500 for Tri-County, $1,000 for Lake Anna Civic Association, $2,000 increase to library funding, and a $3,000 base adjustment to the United Way budget. Also in this scenario, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Mr. Benton?
I just want, can we go ahead and hit some of those as far as the, these increases, like with the social services? I just wanted to know why, why we're in, where's that $3,000 going to? Basically, why we're adding $3,000 to social services?
That was a request made by Mr. Sebula at the last meeting, so I'll have to ask him to provide some guidance on that.
I'm just asking why, I mean, what's the reasoning?
I understand, Mr. Benton. I believe that social services could use some additional money in their budget, and therefore I requested to add 3K to their budget at their, their management usage.
As far as the, now, I know that, I know a little bit about the Lake Anna Civic Association because I've been to some of their committee meetings. I know they're in need, they, they do need a little money for, they do our water testing for Lake Anna, making sure the quality of water is not only safe, but at proper levels of, not contaminated. But how about the, the increase to Tri-County, the Tri-County?
That was done for the same reason, social services.
Ronnie, would you, do you know, what is the overall increase of each one of these funds? Is it 10 percent, 20 percent? Is there a quick idea how much increase it is over their current? That might help you with, do we double their fund, or is it just a couple percent?
I like, you know, some reas, I guess, numbers, basically, why, I mean, just because they need an increase, I just...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Skinner?
I'd just like to add to that, because I'll talk right now, why she's, if we remember right, we got, we give $2,000 a year to the United Way, and they bring back about $80,000 worth of services to us. So the additional $1,000 that we're giving it, yes, it's about a 50 percent increase. And so I'm figuring we can get $120,000 worth of service. I think it's a good ratio. If we pay 1,000 and get close to $40,000 worth of services. The reason I ask for the increase in Powerhouse is because if you take a look, these are all Spotsylvania. We have a lot of Spotsylvania women, abused women that they're caring for, and, and children at the same time. So I, I'm not sure exactly what percent that is, but I know that they have really supported Spotsylvania, and we're now moving to that new building in, on Route 2, and I would like to, knowing that most people, you know, not all, will be in Spotsylvania, and they have really focused on that for us. And I will tell you, the increase in library funding, there's a lot of people out there that don't have computers, kids can't read, so I think that's very important to let them use that money, whether it be increased computers, whether it be increased, it gives our children someplace to go that don't have it at home.
The increase to Empower House, 5 percent. We didn't calculate the $3,000 increase to social services. Increase to Tri-County is 6,000, to Lake Anna Civic Association's, excuse me, 6 percent. To Lake Anna Civic Association is 21 percent, and 0 percent to the library.
Uh, Mr. Ross?
This is, this is, these percentages are relative to what's included in the recommended budget, not relative to what's included in the fiscal year 16 adopted budget.
Mr. Ross?
I'm going to make a motion to, for the EDA, the big grant program. I haven't heard anything new about that. I know it was a flop the first time it was used. I'm going to recommend we transfer 240,000 of that 250 to the schools to offset the 240,000 we just took out for the decrease in the personal property tax, and we transfer an additional 10,000 of that to the libraries for increased funding.
I have a comment.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Yeah, that's mixing one-time money with ongoing money, but that's also taking money out of the EDO fund, which is their fund, and giving it to ongoing revenues for the schools, which I'm curious how we're going to come up with that 250,000 next year. But that's just one point. Another point is, yes, the, the first big grant program was a flop, and the current EDA, which, again, I will reiterate, I attend their meetings as often as possible, and would be, it would be fantastic if other board members were there to see just what they are attempting to do. That was earmarking that money so that when they come before us and explain their big grant program, we can go ahead and either fund it or not fund it. But to take one-time money and put it into recurring, again, I'm going to have to vote against it because that's just poor management. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ross?
I can amend my motion to put it into one-time money for the schools, the 240, and the extra 10,000 to the library.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. And now I would oppose it simply because we're taking the EDO money, which is set up for expansion of business and putting it into the schools. There is, how much other one-time money that is out there?
$4 million.
$4 million. So I don't think that it's necessary to target the EDA in such a way to really gouge their fund in half simply to pay for a $5 tax cut and move it over to the schools. There's $4 million, which I propose putting a lot of that towards the schools and one-time funding for their one-time items that they have, but I don't think we should take it out on the EDA. Thank you.
Mr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be concerned about replacing ongoing school funds with one-time school funds. Like, there are a number of places we could pull it. One observation, it appears that the retention funding, each percentage looks to be about 300,000. So if we went from 3 percent to 2 percent, and I would just mention that that was a brand-new proposal that we saw on Friday. I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you. Talking about the grant fund there, I'm not sure I would call it a flop. Well, we found the problem was, we couldn't verify, we could not verify whether we were getting the employment and the extra people doing it. Now, I know that the EDA has taken a lot of time to figure out how we do that, and it's probably the process that needs to be improved. I don't think it's hurting the county. I think it did, we just couldn't verify that, and I think the EDA is now working very diligently to get the process so that we can verify that these companies are doing what they said they're going to do, and if not, we can withdraw the money. So I, I would like to keep that money with the EDA.
So do you have any other comments about the current budget or recommendations on what we should do? There is a motion on the table to move the money from the EDA to offset the two pots, right? The one pot to pay for the reduced personal property tax. That would be the big grant pot.
And this is one-time spending?
And that's what the EDA was too, so...
Right, right, I understand that.
Oh, call a question.
Three yes with Mr. Yakubowski, Mr. Sebula, Dr. Trampy, and Mr. Skinner voting no.
So what do we, let's get some proposals up here to get this moving. Mr. Benton?
I just, why don't we move to the schools? That's going to be the biggest decision we need to make, as far as what we can, what further we can transfer to them, or...
Well, we still have to, you took 250,000 out of the schools to pay for the personal property tax?
I'm sorry, I know you're asking me a question.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to, 235, 914.
Sure.
235, 914.
Is what you took out of the schools? Okay. Right now, this is balanced at 85 cents?
Yes, this is balanced.
So based on what's presented in front of us right now, does somebody want something added or removed from what we currently have showing? Mr. Yakubowski?
Yes, sir, thank you. I have a question for the schools. I know that there is, there, I should say, there are places where one-time money can be plugged in. Can that be shared? Because we do have 4 million roughly that is sitting there.
There is 4 million in this scenario, and it's just a scenario. We have used 3.4 million of that one-time money here and reduced our debt service by 562,000 in ongoing debt service, and part of that is what is being used to pay for this additional 1.2 million dollars to the schools.
Okay, so if we were to reduce, or eliminate borrowing with the 3.4 and go, let's say that just in half, that would give us roughly 280,000, or 300, no?
Right.
Yeah, 280,000.
Yeah.
Of one-time monies that we could use, but then it would also free up 1.5 million in one-time funding. So instead of taking all 3.4 and using it, we would take 1.9 and use that that way.
I think I understand what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am.
You're saying, take half of the 3.4 million, use that for one time, leave the other 1.7 million dollars in one-time funding there. That would reduce the debt service savings here to 281,000, which means you're going to have a 281,000 negative still to balance in ongoing general fund money. So you'll have to take 281,000 from elsewhere.
Understand, okay. Then what if we don't use any of the one-time money to pay off debt?
If we don't use any of the one-time money to pay off our debt, then we have a 562,000 hole in the general fund with all the other things here as, as...
As proposed.
In this scenario.
Okay. What if we take the retention funding for employees and move that up to five years of service? Because I agree with Mr. Trampy, that was given to us on Friday. While it might be very worthy and very needed, having something come in at the last moment that is, is not only this year, but is a continuation year after year, I do, I kind of like a little bit more time to, to take it in, have a presentation, understand it better, just to make sure that we're not underfunding it, overfunding it, if four years is the correct one that we want to go with, at 3 percent, is it 3 percent also?
This is, this number equates to 3 percent, yes.
Okay.
Mary's looking, I'm not sure that we have that information. Is Rose here?
Yeah, I can make a comment.
Well, as you're, Mr. Benton?
I'll just say, yeah, that was brought on us pretty much spur of the moment. I think it's mostly a Band-Aid fix to what the true problems are, to be quite honest. Our, I, I, well, I think it's studies, needs to be done, and I think some information that I've requested from HR will answer a lot of questions as far as our pay and getting us up to where the county employees should be, and, I mean, this is, it's not going to be an easy fix. And, I mean, this is not going to be easy fix, and it's kind of, not going to be a one-year thing. I'll be very disliked for this, but I'm not against doing the five-year and even dropping it down to a 1%. It gives them a little bit of something additional. It's a Band-Aid as it is.
If I might, Mr. Bennet? If I might interrupt them?
Absolutely.
Being that it was proposed on Friday and being that county employees do get a 2% increase this year anyway, I would actually move that we remove it entirely and gear it up for next year's budget and make, and give us that amount of time to look at it, study it, make sure that we're doing it the right way, as opposed to throwing it in here. If we were to do that, that would remove the negative 562, give us another roughly 440 that I would propose putting over to additional school funding.
Mr. Sebula?
I'm sorry, I would just say that would leave 3.4 million in one-time funding, that if the schools had small amounts of one-time funding, that we could scoop money over there to them too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having been the, kind of the originator of this thought before the board, I would certainly agree, because I had thought upfront that we were going to do a study on this over the summer and present those results come September, October to the board, so that it would give us a decision, or some information to make a decision on next year's budget. So I have, I certainly have no problem with the delay on that, because I do think we need to study it. I thought so upfront, but again, this came up upon us right away. So I wouldn't have, have no problem with withdrawing it for this year's budget.
Bonnie, I have a question. So, right now, based on the 85 cent, county employees get a 2% pay raise, is that correct? What are we anticipating the school employees to get? Because I've heard back and forth that we want to make sure that both get the same. I've heard both. So is it 2% plus a step?
No. In their budget, in their budget, which we all acknowledge has, acknowledge has a gap, they had a step and a 1% adjustment. And their average step... 2.16 is their average step.
Could I, could LaShawn's back there? Maybe you could just...
When you look at the scenario that's before you this evening, it currently does not allow the school board to provide a modified pay raise. Initially, in the school board's budget and the superintendent's budget, it did include a step and a 1% COLA. Having a better understanding of what the funds look like, it was modified to 2%. So when you look at the 2% and looking at the scenario that's before you, we are only getting 300,000 towards the pay raise. So we would not be able to do a pay raise with the current scenario. In order to do it, we would have to cut 22 positions to fund the pay raise.
So there's, there's no step increase?
No step increase. That has been, we're proposing to the school board that that be modified. We have our first budget work session on April 25th.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, if I might before...
Mr. Yakubowski?
Before LaShawn leaves. The email that was sent to us by your chairman basically said 5 million in new dollars need to come your way. Can you break that down into ongoing, into one-time?
Absolutely. When you look at the column that's green, that totals a 5.1. Of that amount, health insurance is 1.2. The COLA, 2% COLA for employees, is 2.4. Instead of having 47 positions and a cafe monitors, we would go down to 14 positions. And then 800,000 for non-compensation. So in terms of what I know definitively that has to be reoccurring is the pay raise. When you look at that 2%, so that's 2.4. When you look at the 14 positions, that's 700,000. While we prefer to have reoccurring, if we had no choice but to accept one-time, we would. If you look at the non-compensation, 800,000. That is primarily for fees, you're looking at contracts and supplies. Our preference is reoccurring, but if it's one-time, we will accept it. And when you look at health insurance, because health insurance is volatile, it changes every single year. So to answer your question, the total one-time here potentially would be 2.7 million.
And isn't, is that not covered in the, or is that outside of the county administrator's budget?
It's outside, that's a different 2.7.
So we need to come up with 2.7 million so that you all will be able to get a pay increase?
In total, we're saying we need 5.1. And if you take that 5.1, and if you subtract out the 2.4, the amount that we need is 2.7. That will cover the health, health insurance for 1.2, it will cover the 14 positions and the non-compensation. So I've already accounted for the 2.7 coming from Mr. Taylor. So we're asking for the 2.7 plus the 5.1. In the scenario that's before us, it has indicated of the 5.1, we would get 1.5. That still does not cover the health insurance, that still does not cover the pay raise. It only covers the health insurance of 1.2, and at least 300,000 going towards the 2.4.
Okay. Mr. Baker?
If I may, because when you're, from that vantage point back there, sometimes when I'm hearing it, I'm wondering, and she did a fine job, what you might be hearing. But I just wanted to reiterate something from a, articulated a little bit different. Of the different items, Mr. Yakubowski, that you were asking, that we could accept one-time money for, I believe what I heard from Ms. Gaines, which is accurate, was everything that was on that sheet that is currently unfunded, we could use one-time funding for, with the exception of the 2.4 for the pay raise. We would not be able to apply one-time money towards that. And everything that is in that column that adds up to 5.1 is above the 2.7 that is currently allocated and dedicated to debt service. So I just wanted to share that a little bit, again, just to reinforce that, make sure there wasn't any confusion.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And thank you.
Mr. Taylor, was the 2.7 recurring or one-time?
2.7 in the proposed budget is recurring. It covers their debt service ongoing.
It was their debt service.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. Is there a reason why, I mean, you can modify your debt service and use that recurring money over, because I know you're looking at the same screen I am, and it just doesn't exist. And so if, yeah, maybe, I'm sorry, I keep, I keep looking at LaShawn, and I think I'm addressing this to her to get an answer perhaps, that that money could be, I mean, the school board obviously would have to, the final decision on where those, those dollars would go and to amend the CIP. But, I mean, in, in theory, that could be done to then get the, the pay increase for teachers, but then, of course, your CIP would be lowered. Now, of that CIP that would be lowered, is there any amount in there that could be funded with one-time dollars? Probably not. I mean, I, yeah. You're looking at me and shaking your head, so I would, I would say, okay. All right. So basically, what we're at right now is, the schools will be getting 2.7 million roughly from the county administrator's budget. According to this, as the screen sits right now, it's 1.2 million more, so that's 3 million more dollars, which would cover the pay increase, but would reduce down to 600,000 your CIP. So in my opinion, I would like to find a way to, to get more going over to the schools, but honestly, in looking at these numbers, I'm just not sure where we can pull it from, unless we don't transfer money over to the transportation fund, which we will then have to do next year. So I, or, or if we don't use the one-time money and plug in the hole, that would give another 400, so it could be 1.6 over to the schools if we eliminate the, the fund that was just taken off the screen. The, the, thank you. The retention funding for employees. If that was eliminated, that would cover the debt service savings, correct? And then you would have the extra 400,000 that we could put somewhere.
I'm sorry, are you asking me?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Could you please repeat it? I'm sorry.
Really?
Well, I have to be honest, at this point, I'm not sure if we're talking about the county's debt service or the school's debt service, or what the clear scenario is.
What, what I'm basically looking at is the, is the page that is up currently.
Yes.
The schools just said that they need an additional 2.4 million just to get raises, above and beyond the 2.7 that has been transferred over. The yellow highlighted areas that you have, the one-time funding, would go to normal, it wouldn't be highlighted, and that 562,000, if we can fill that gap with the retention funding for employees. So if we got rid of retention of funding, totally, that debt service, that would be gone. Are you...
I, yes, I've reduced it already.
Okay, well, all the numbers disappeared, that's why I'm wondering.
Let's do it in reverse, how, how you're talking about it.
Okay.
If this goes away.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you saying we don't apply this one-time funding to the debt service? I mean, to reduce the debt to be issued this summer?
Right. Let's just take, let's do that right now.
Which means we have this... What happens when you get going too fast sometimes? Wouldn't have that savings, which means right this minute, let's just check it out, we are $487,000 to the good.
Okay, so if, if we were to take that and apply that to the schools, that would give them basically 1.7, yes, 1.704, and we would still have 3.4 million in the bank in one-time funding?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Okay, that, that's what I was getting at. But still, there, it's $700,000 shy, which happens to equate to the transfer to the transportation fund, which then would, would make it whole with 2.4. But, you know, that, that would be a transfer over to the schools of 3, 4.4, 4.4 million, which hasn't been seen in a decade or so. That's a huge amount of money in a transfer.
Mr. Trampy?
Were you done, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go right ahead. I'm just trying to just get the conversation going.
Yeah, if, if we were to remove the retention funding, the million 50, 1 million 50,000, my preference would be just to, to transfer that to the schools straight away, rather than changing the one-time debt service and getting half of that amount.
Mr. Bennet, you got a question? Now, I'll just point out one more time that the $5 million budget stability reserve is $5 million that can be transferred to the schools and save $900,000 a year recurring that can be applied towards something useful in the county. Any other comments? Mr. Skinner?
And again, I understand what you're saying, but that is a one-time money. Correct.
Well, and then there's also the annual recurring increase that you have to apply to it, but yes, I agree. But the letter did state they would take, unless the schools doesn't want the one-time money.
The question, I'm sorry, we have to say this. The question for the schools, though, is repeatedly, it sounds like they are saying that they, their intent, and based on the answer to a specific question that the board had to the schools, what is your intent to do with the reserves? Their intent, if their answer to the question is still correct, is to use one-time money for ongoing cost. And if we do that, we are going to have a problem in the fiscal year 18 budget for the schools. In addition to the problem we already know that we're going to have on our own side with the $2.8 million hole that we are going to have for transportation. And I'm just concerned about how we're going to fund that, how we're going to balance next year's budget, if we give the schools one-time money and they use it for ongoing things. And that is their intent, unless their intent has changed from last week to this week.
Mr. Trampy?
That being the case, since the retention funding is ongoing money, I'm going to go ahead and move that we transfer that amount to the school, zero it out, line 48, as you've already done, and, and put it to the schools. Make that in form of a motion.
Any comment?
I would, I'm sorry, I would just like to say, I agree, Dr. Trampy, that's a good use of, of funding that will then basically move it up to nearly $5 million in transfer to the schools, in ongoing money.
Call the question.
It's 2.7 plus here.
Seven, yes.
So, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Skinner?
So, after doing that, I heard that the schools will now get $5 million of recurring money, correct?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We'll boost it up to $5 million recurring money?
Yes.
Okay, and that is including the county administrator's budget at 2.7?
Yes, it is. It's the 2.7 originally, plus this 2.3.
And we have 2.4 of one-time money, is that correct? No, no, not what we got, but what we've got in the budget now. Do we have 2.4? Because what we're trying to get to is, my understanding, is the school needed 5.1, and they already got 2.7 in addition, so they were looking at 7.8 million, correct? Is what they've asked us for. And of that, 5.1 needed to be reoccurring, I guess, and the other could be one-time funding. So one, if, if we met the request, it would be 2.7 of not, of one-time money.
This, what's on the screen now, takes the available one-time funding down to what we think is a minimum balance of $300,000. We have said we're going to use that one-time money, we're going to transfer this 3.4 million dollars from the general fund to the capital projects fund to pay for capital, instead of borrowing it this summer here. That is then going to allow us to free up $562,000 in ongoing funding, which helps us fund this to the schools.
Okay.
If we don't do this, this goes away, which means we have a $562,000 hole to, to balance.
Okay.
As it is now, sorry.
Mr. Bennet, go ahead.
Okay, go. What's the total we're giving to the schools right now?
Total we're giving to the schools right now is the original...
2.7.
2.674 million, plus this 2.267 million, 4,942,568. And additionally, again, unless this has changed since the last information we received from the schools, the net new state funding that they have is 876,000. So the combined total new is 5.8 million.
I would just like to mention, I don't think the schools would cost remaining because they brought it down to 8.1 after the state and everything else. Is that correct?
The 12.6 you're saying should be 8.1?
Yeah, I, I, no, I think the difference between the 5.8 and the 8.1, that should be the request remaining, is that correct?
That's correct. If you take the 7.8 they were asking for, roughly here on the screen, you see 5 million. We are still short 2.8 million.
Right, okay.
And so...
And that, 2.8, okay, that would be, that could be, that 2.8 could be one-time money?
That is correct, sir.
If we decide to do that.
Correct.
How, how would you spend that on one-time?
This is how I would do it, because at this point, over the last four years, we have received an average increase of $400,000, only 1.6 million. We're only in this position because we have not received adequate increases over the last several years. So how we would do it is this. Number one, when you look at the 2.8, I would use that health insurance, 1.2, because health insurance is volatile. That brings me down to 1.6. Those two remaining items would be the positions, and it would be non-comp. Not because we want to, it is not the preferred, preferred approach. So I would say that.
But the positions are ongoing positions, right?
But every year, we have attrition, we make adjustments, we make modifications.
Let me, if, if I might also, I think that it was said that we also were receiving upwards towards a million dollars of additional state revenue in terms of new money. That would be contingent upon the, the funding of the pay raise. If we're unable... If we're unable to fund the pay raise, then we really do not realize that level of increase from the state. And also, just to piggyback on the one-time expenditures, I think that we have found ourselves in the position on an annual basis, and we have come to this board to ask for permission to utilize some of our own carryover on one-time expenditures such as non-comp. Our preference with many of those is to be able to have the capacity to fund them in a recurring fashion. So it's not, again, the preferable means, but in order to keep us from having to reduce resources and positions, we would have to take that risk, and we acknowledge that that is a risk.
So Bonnie, where are we at? Where are we right now?
We are balanced right now. We are balanced right now.
Okay, so we're balanced at 85 cents. 3.4 million goes to...
3.4 million dollars will be transferred to capital.
2.2 additional to the schools.
Yes, $700,000 transferred to the transportation fund. The treasurer's offices fund it with their requests. There's pay parity for the fire rescue battalion chiefs, division chiefs, and captains. A number of regional agencies received a slight increase. There is a $250,000 allocation from the EDO fund balance to the EDA for the big grant program. And there is $250,000 from one-time funding to the economic development department for various projects. We end with a $0 balance in the general fund in terms of balancing revenues and expenditures, $300,000 positive balance in one-time funding, and a $205,000 balance in the EDO fund balance.
Any comments?
No.
Mr. Benton?
I do have some of those proposals that I've... Some cost savings at some point, if you want to hear. The big ones.
I would... If you'd like to bring them up, or would you like to talk to them over the next year? We have more time to investigate and determine.
I think several can be talked about now.
Okay, and I always, speaking my personally, I don't know enough about those topics to make a vote. That's my issue I have with the ones that are up here right now. But if you'd like to bring them up, we can...
How about if I just pick one? And the one that, Virginia Sheriff's Association. Now, the schools do the, it's possibly the education association, fire does the, our union. We pay those dues out of our own pockets. For years now, ever since my employment, when I was employed with the sheriff's office, that was paid for me. I didn't have a choice. If I was given a choice, you know, to either pay it or not pay it, I would not have. They've now created a police benevolence association that there, is there, I'm assuming, kind of their union now.
Now, before you, is the sheriff here?
No, apparently he left.
Okay.
That's $8,900 that we pay for, for our lobbying group, for the sheriff's office. If we're going to pay for theirs, then we need to pay for the schools, and we need to pay for the fire union. I'm telling you, just taking my personal experience, that is not, as a taxpayer, I'd certainly know why in the world I'm paying that. It's a lobbying group. It gives minimal benefits to the sheriff's deputies. The police benevolence association, I looked up last night. I think the VSA gives $1,000 for line of death. PBA gives 60, up to $60,000 in salary. They do the, they do scholarships just as VSA. Also, that one of the things the sheriff had said in his thing, they provide training on the new laws. Well, I wish, I think the Commonwealth attorney left, but every year, at least when I was there, the Commonwealth attorney or one of the attorneys from the Commonwealth attorney's office would come up and do a review, law review, for all the new legislation that's coming out that have directly affected us. Also, you can go to the academy and get a, which is free, and get the same. We're paying for our lobbying group for the sheriff. I won't bring up any of the others. I'll leave those out, and we can certainly discuss those later on, unless you... You know, I'm willing to do that, but as far as this one, I'm telling you, as a taxpayer, I would not want my money going to a lobbying group. And that is all it is. We've paid it for years. Why in the world we continue it, I don't know. If they want a union, just like the schools, the fire, and whatever department within the county or schools, they need to pay their own. And I would make a motion that the $8,900 that we're paying annually now for Virginia sheriff's office be removed.
Are there any comments on that? Mr. Yakubowski?
The only comment I would have is, before I would vote yes on something like that, I'd like to hear the sheriff and his explanation of it. Not that I doubt anything. I like to get the full story of everything. Unfortunately, he's not here, so my no vote will be simply because of that, not because of the merits of what you raised. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Skinner?
And, Mr. Chairman, I just, I agree with what Mr. Yakubowski says. And we ask, I mean, he's not here, I don't know why he's not here, but before I vote on it, and maybe I'd ask Greg to table this until the next meeting, have it here. But that would be my suggestion, sir, but it's your call.
Are we able to withhold that until we take a vote next time or whenever? I don't know why we keep on, you know, I don't know why he's not here, to be honest. He was here earlier, and then now he's gone, so. I thought we were going to have him present here for this discussion, since we brought it up last time, but...
So if you'd like to take the vote, we can take the vote, and then we can always discuss it again later.
I'd like, I'd like to vote.
Okay, so let's call the question.
Three yes with Mr. Yakubowski, Mr. Sebula, Mr. McLaughlin, and Mr. Skinner voting no.
So just potentially ask Mr. Taylor, potentially have the sheriff on a separate meeting to discuss each one of these topics on a later date. Mr. Skinner?
And that's the only reason, Greg, I'd just like to hear it. I know he wasn't there, but I have no reason why he's not here, so I want to hear that, too. Bonnie, could you bring that back up on the screen, please? I saw something, I'm not sure if it is, go to the bottom. Our pay raises, are we still, are we still, is this balanced because we're waiting until 1 January to give?
No, they're still on...
So this is good on 1 June, okay.
Sorry, these are just, it's like a pick list at the bottom of other things that you may have chosen. I just wanted to have the numbers available. So, no, this includes the original 2% recommended proposal at July 1.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment, Mr. Yakubowski?
My only comment would be that, and I'm not here to cut off conversation at all, but having gone through all this, I would make a motion to move forward with this, or if there's any other discussion, I'll hold that back until discussion is finalized.
That's, I'm trying to find, are we done? Are there any more comments on what is proposed here before we take a motion? Mr. Skinner?
I would just like to go, so we've been talking about a lot of different things. So right now, our transfer to the schools, is that correct in what you're saying? 5.1 to the schools, and that is recurring money? And that includes the 2.7 original from the county administrator's recommended budget?
That's correct. Let me just give you one more piece of information.
And we're not giving them any one-time money? That would be my next question.
Where's the increase? The total transfer to the schools is an increase of 2, excuse me, of $4,942,568, including the originally recommended 2.7 million. But the full transfer to the schools is $121.4 million. And that will be a $4.9 million increase over the fiscal year 16 transfer. Yes. There is an increase of $4.9 million in the transfer from fiscal year 16, adopted to this new, what may be the adopted budget. That is a total transfer to the schools of $121.4 million.
But the difference at 4.9, as the schools requested, brought down to 8.1. So am I clear that saying that they need $3.2 million to meet their request of 8.1?
I have to be honest, I wasn't able to follow the schools' numbers.
Okay, as I said right here, what we all received, Bonnie, you didn't get it.
No, I did not.
I'm just looking at this, and what they're saying is they've worked it down, I believe, to total of 5.1 above the recommended budget of the county administrator, which was going to actually make it, is that 7.8 total, okay? And of that 7.8, we are giving them 4.9, okay? Which is going to give us a 2.9 deficit to the schools. And all the 4.9 we're giving them is recurring money?
Correct. Yes, it is.
And so, all the one-time money will be using to cut down debt service?
Yes, sir. We're using to cash fund capital projects, county capital projects, to achieve county savings on debt service, which we are then factoring into all of this available funding to do additional things, one of which is to give the schools 2.6, $2.3 million in addition to the 2.7 in the recommended budget.
Okay, and really, if we take, so obviously, if we take any from the one-time funding, as you show, then we're going to decrease the debt serving savings?
Yes.
All right, and if we decrease the debt service savings from the one-time money, we have to find where we're going to make that up?
Yes, sir.
But right now, we're at $300,000 balance, correct? A positive $300,000?
The positive $300,000 is in one-time funding.
One-time funding, okay. Well, I know that it's critical that, what I don't want to do is lose more teachers. I'm not sure how I can come up with the 2.9 that they need. I'd like to come up with at least half of it and reduce that, but I'm not sure where we can get it from, other than, well, we can't do it, we've already set the tax rate. I just... Has anybody got a suggestion? I mean, I understand, we're here as a team.
No more suggestions for me.
Well, I know your suggestion is take it from the reserve.
Mr. Ross, did you have something?
Yeah, we can take some if people would approve it. I mean, and let's have a discussion about that, too, because I think it's very important. And I know that Mr. McLaughlin has talked about the reserve that has 4.9 in it, I think, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman?
Yakubowski?
We don't actually allocate the dollars until a later meeting. This is the framework to work within, so if we do need to adjust, we could adjust. And so we could have that discussion about budget stabilization fund, whether we do it all right now, if we do it later. I mean, that's, we can always have that discussion and then do it at that point, is what I'm saying. Is that correct, Mr. County Administrator? I mean, we're passing the budget tonight, but we're not actually allocating the funds until we allocate the funds.
You'll be adopting a resolution tonight to adopt the budget by fund. You can always adjust the budget.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We can always adjust it in the future. Right, and so we...
And appropriation resolutions won't occur until later.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I was looking for.
So, the appropriation tonight, what we're trying to do is, what you're saying is that, and then the stability fund was 4.9?
5 million.
5 million. So if we pass it today, we could take some of that money as, give it to the schools as one-time fund? Because that's what it is, one-time funding, correct?
It is one-time funding, yes. You could choose to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Skinner, I would only say the stipulation would have to be that the schools only use that money for one-time funding issues and not ongoing, so we don't dig a hole. But my point was that we can do that at another meeting, knowing that that is something, knowing that the money is out there, and we can have that discussion outside of this framework.
Then I would only ask one question, LaShawn, and that is, do you have $2.9 million of one-time funding that you won't come back next year with? And that, I know we've already got the recurring. Can you use $2.9 million one-time funding that you have on your chart now?
Now, before I answer that question, let me caveat it with this. I'm just looking at some practices that have been in place. I know some counties, what they do, they do not accept a rate increase from their provider. They have a health insurance reserve, and one example would be the county. They are not, you guys are not increasing your rate for next year. But if you fall short, you're going to dip into your health insurance reserve, which is one-time. I'm asking that you allow us to do that same practice. So with that answer, I would have 1.2 of the 2.9. The remaining 1.7, in looking at non-compensation, I will look at that particular area as well.
That's 800,000.
That's 800,000, so that gives you 2 million. For the special ed positions, knowing that our enrollment is going up every week almost, that has to be reoccurring. I would not, in good faith, be able to tell you we can use one-time for that. But understanding that we would have to come back next year. What I want you to know, if you look at 2.9, if that is not funded, that is 56 positions we would have to cut from the existing budget.
You would cut 56 positions?
That would be an option that the school board would have to consider, because you have to fund those 14 positions, special ed, ESOL. Looking at the non-compensation, you need those items. So those would be some decisions that the school board would have to make. So the 2.9 that we're asking for, also, if I can share this with you, in terms of the next steps, the school board is scheduled to have two work sessions, one April 25th, one May 2nd. They are scheduled to adopt their budget May the 9th, so that we can get contracts out to teachers before they leave school. So I'm not sure how much delay you would do before you talk about the budget stabilization, but I wanted you to be aware of that timeline.
Just again, I think that everything Ms. Gaines just shared was on point. I do agree with her, we would be coming back in regards to if we applied any of this funding towards recurring, such as positions, we would have immediately a gap starting next year. But I did want to reiterate, the challenge for us with the state money is that our 2%, it's an all-or-nothing proposition. We can't modify it to a 1% or a 1.5. We have to fully fund that pay increase along with meeting our mandatory requirements, or we simply, we don't have to cut positions, we simply just would not provide a pay raise.
Okay, and so, LaShawn, just so I got it straight, you would need, you'd have 2.1 of recurring, of one-time money. You'd need another 800,000 that you'd use this year, but it would be recurring money next year?
That is correct.
Okay, all righty, all right. Because I believe in 2014, we did not get you the million dollars, so therefore, you lost that million dollars. Okay, and the board, may I ask, could we, at the next budget session, could we review this? Could we review, taking it from the fund? I'm just so we don't delay it in order to give the schools a yes or no answer. That's what I'm asking for. Would we be prepared to speak to that reserve?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. We don't have any more budget work sessions, thankfully. We do have a work session.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but just let, don't label it a budget work session, because I think we're all over it at that point.
Could we discuss it at our next work session? Thank you.
I think that we should. I think it's something worthy to do.
Okay, thank you very much, all right?
Any more comments? Any other comments? Mr. Taylor, do you have a comment? Well, if you do this, that means, there's teachers here, you raise your hand, you get a comment. Any other comments on what was proposed at 85 cents? There's no other comments, there is a motion to approve, what, Bonnie, if you want to put that up on the screen? So there's a motion to approve the budget scenario as posted on...
Right, the primary differences are here, which is the transfer in additional funding to the schools, a reduction in the retention funding for county employees to zero. County employees would still receive a 2% adjustment beginning at some point in July. Those were the major changes this evening.
I'm sorry, my hands up.
Mr. Skinner? Mr. Skinner.
Am I correct in saying one other thing? This year we're planning to add to the reserve of eight hundred and some amount of money?
Yes, that is true.
So, right now, if we decide not to add that to it, would that cover the eight hundred thousand? And keeping the stability reserve right where it is right now, but not adding to it, that would give the schools another eight hundred thousand for one time?
That would be one-time money, yes, and it would require you to revise your policies.
Then let's go ahead and do that, let, I don't want to make a motion for that, I want to go ahead and pass this, but that's something that we'd like to discuss too at the next work session, please. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Call a question.
Four yes, with Mr. Ross, Mr. McLaughlin, and Dr. Trampy voting no.
Mr. Taylor, that's the last of the budget issues, correct?
We, we need to, um, have time to go back and work these into the, each, fund-by-fund budgets, and then be able to come back and present you with resolutions for the tax rates, which you've really already adopted, PPTRA percentage, the budget, and the CIP. So there will be four resolutions coming back to you, um, later on this evening.
Okay, and we still have two more items.
Mr. Chairman, if we're not too exhausted, um, does the board want to discuss category funding of schools?
We do that when we do the appropriation, do we not? Because I, I would like to discuss that too, Ms. Trampy.
You can adopt the budget tonight by, by, um, categories. You can appropriate operationally and it'll be fine. So you can make that decision when we actually bring the appropriations back to you, which is typically May or June.
Okay, let me give this a chance to discuss it. So we're waiting on the, uh, resolutions, we can go ahead and go into the next items, Mr. Taylor?
Next item is, uh, on the county newsletter, and Kathy Smith, Public Information Officer, has information on that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, we, we, uh, talked about this earlier this year, and the board had asked for us to bring back a few more details about the cost of a county newsletter. So we brought back, we have brought back to you some options, some regarding distribution and so forth. You have before you, I hope, a handout and also a copy of the school's very fine newsletter, which they're doing, solely online at this point, and we've, we've had discussion, they've, they've either begun or revamped their newsletter as of December of two thousand and fifteen. Very quickly, for the county newsletter, we would get articles, ideas for articles from board members, of course, from departments, discussing issues, new initiatives, meet-your-county-government types of articles to help acquaint the community with what we do, what all this hard-working staff does for the community, and, um, events that are coming up in profiles. And of course, the board members could, would be welcome sources as well as departments. The oversight, layout design, editing, and so forth would be overseen by us in county administration for board approval. We would probably get some written articles from departments, we would probably write some from discussing them with departments. We're proposing, and of course it's the board's prerogative, but we're proposing at this point twice a year, a newsletter, spring and fall. Proposing at this point, four pages, uh, full color, and if we do a strictly online publication, you have a lot of flexibility with the amount of pages, obviously, because printing, you have to go four or eight, you have to have even numbers, so, preferably. So that works better. I'll get into the cost in just a second, but, um, we have, uh, worked in the past, if you recall, the Beacon and also the Spotsylvania, the County Connection, two newsletters that we've had in the past. We did work with a person who does layout and design and, um, proposing to use that person again. That would probably be the main cost apart from any printing that we do. And the, the estimate for a four-page newsletter twice a year, each time would be in the range of four hundred to four fifty. It might be a little bit less, but I, I want to give you the outside, what we think would be the outside cost. And, um, of course, distribution can be very varied and very broad with online posting, and which we would very widely advertise per our usual methods, in other words, letting the community know. Spotsylvania, again, has a newsletter, you need to go look at it, and, um, we think you'll enjoy it and learn from it. And we'd use, um, library branches and so forth, but we had, uh, we had a thought that maybe, uh, a way to begin this, to see the demand, since this is pretty much an online society, however, we don't want to cut off anyone who might not have that access. We talked about printing a smaller number initially, and we've talked to the school's print shop, and they're very willing to do this at a minimal cost, even, even as low as one hundred copies, we can go larger than that. You can see the, the costs on here. They would do, um, they would do setup and production, which we need to have done, which is a thirty-dollar charge, and then fifty dollars for every one hundred copies. And what we could do is put those in distribution points throughout the county, just initially, and we would gauge the, the reception of printed copies versus people who go online. I've talked to IS, and we can have a very friendly portal on our homepage, we'll advertise the, the newsletter, and people can either sign up to receive an automatic notification when the newsletters are out, or even the newsletter itself, we'll work on those technical details, but, uh, that's obviously something that can be done. And I've put numbers on here, just the larger numbers, if you wanted to do larger amounts of copies. And we can look at this again before the fall newsletter, if, if the board so chooses, to see whether or not it's, it's worth even doing the hard copies, because the other option, I believe, the schools, I hope I'm not speaking incorrectly, but I believe they've opted to do an online-only version, therefore avoiding any printing costs. And we would, of course, print for any of our citizens who requested a copy, we'd be happy to do that. And we have, with the equipment we have in our offices, we can produce a, a small amount of copies for anyone who would want copies that way. So these are some of the suggestions that we have. I know when we talked before, the board brought up some other distribution methods of, I've checked with the treasurer regarding the, uh, you know, insertion in the tax bills, that's, that's pretty costly, um, actually. So I'm not sure that that's a route that you would necessarily, uh, want to go. That would be about three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for ninety thousand mailed bill inserts. We talked with the Freelance Star regarding, and, and with all due respect to the Freelance Star, putting this in the Star Weekly would, would also be costly, so you see the numbers there. There are different weights of paper and so forth, options, but it's, it's going to be over a thousand, it's going to be, you know, four figures there, with a comma, uh, no matter, if we do that, whether or not they print it and insert it and, and distribute it, or whether they just insert and, and distribute what we've already had printed by the schools. So we have some options for you, and we'd like to see what the will of the board is on this. We can go ahead and, um, begin, if you wish, drafting, you know, pulling together articles for a spring newsletter, and, uh, bring that back to the board.
Any comments? So who's going to write the newsletter and?
Well, what we've done in the past, doesn't have to be done this way, but I, we approach, I approach different department heads, and we talk about ideas, and they, they'll give me the print, and as a former editor, you know, I kind of love that, to tell you the truth, because we, we put the words together and, and, uh, just help fashion the text, and a lot of times departments just supply us with the text, or we can work, you know, we can fashion the text ourselves, and then we would bring you, the, the design layout person is, is a very crucial portion of this, I believe, and a crucial expense, because she'll give this, the, she, he or she, but, would give it the professional touch that it needs. There's an outside designer that we've used in the past for all the county publications in the past, the annual report, and the Beacon and other, uh, reports that we've done in the past.
Mr. Samuel.
So if I understand correctly, then what you're looking for is approval of the concept?
Approval of the concept, uh, if the board wishes us to go, to move forward, Mr. Taylor, feel free. But we can start putting this together, and, and I'm envisioning, um, you know, for, if there's a spring newsletter, we can bring it back to you all either late May or beginning of June, and, and have, have the layout and design. Certainly, um, board articles, ideas, and suggestions from board members are more than welcome, so, you wouldn't have to write them, you might not have time for that, but if, if you wanted to suggest even. But I think this can be a real community-friendly thing, and it gives, it kind of gives a face to Spotsylvania County Government and, and all our employees. Plus, it's a really, it's a very good chance to let people know, uh, just as an example, this is your utilities department, did you know this is what they do, you know, and just kind of educate the community about all the services that the county provides.
Well, I, um, certainly was in favor of the previous newsletter that we had, I thought it was a big success. I, I think we got overcome by, uh, um, cost in, in a, in a bad time. But, uh, that, having said all of that, uh, I'm certainly in favor of the concept, and I motion that we approve.
No one comment, please.
Mr. Skinner.
Thank you. I believe what we start out with is make sure that the people know what this board has accomplished. And I think that's what, what a lot of people don't realize, and they don't come to the meetings nor do they watch the TV. And really, people don't realize, some of them don't even know who their supervisors are, more or less what we accomplished. So I think one of the goals of this should be, you know, to let people know what this board is doing and accomplishing, and stuff of that nature, you know, events coming up, that's great too. Departments, if there's something special to be recognized by a department, and it's gone out of its way to do something, absolutely. But I think the concept was to let people know what this board has accomplished over the past year, and what we're looking at in the future, so that may spur some people to come out and talk to us.
Mr. Benton.
I would say you didn't budget for this. So I would, uh, say we'd, we'd need to budget for it. Again, we're, although the amounts are very low, it's still something that we should budget for. I'd just say I, I'm not against it, but, uh, it'd be for next year.
And that was one of my comments, is that there's, the costs aren't here. I mean, there is, somebody's writing an article that, in a staff position somewhere, that there's a cost associated, the layout design has a cost associated with it. I mean, if anything, I'd rather us put it online and see how the reception is before we go out, or at least do a trial run and bring us back a sample before we commit to, I don't know how much it's going to cost. I mean, uh, I just, my experience in the past with newsletters is they generally go one or two times, and then they, people lose interest in doing them. And then it becomes a task that we're paying somebody to do, and I, that's where my question about moving this forward is. Any other comments? All right, there's a motion to approve, still?
Yes, motion, uh, motion stands to approve, uh, this is, uh, a, a concept. And, uh, I believe, uh, the, uh, county administrator probably, um, can take care of the budget situation with this, uh, upfront, but, uh, I defer to him for that, but, uh, motion on the floors to approve the concept.
Mr. Taylor, did you have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to mention in connection with the, both the cost and the, the template or format for the concept, that what, um, Ms. Smith and I had discussed was that the, the first one or two of these would be really, uh, template or samples that in the, in the next year, if we got one edition out this summer and one edition out in the fall, that for next year it would need to be a budgeted item if it proved positive and, and popular, and, and appeared to be sustainable. And that what we would consider is, is primarily releasing it, uh, online, and printing, uh, like, a hundred copies, distributing them at the two libraries, at the school's headquarters, and our, at our county offices, and seeing what consumption was like of, on the print copies, and what hits were like on the web, and then make a decision in budget formation for the following years, whether or not to continue.
So this is a one-time issue before it comes back for board to decide?
Well, we'll bring, we would bring back the first issue to the board before we release it. We'll show you the template.
Any other comments? Call a question.
Five yes, with Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Benton voting no.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is discussion on the board retreat concept. You might recall that I have passed around a couple of times now, sort of a Chinese menu-style, pick-and-option, um, front-and-back forum, and I have a smathering of responses back that, uh, given the busyness of all of our schedules, perhaps it should not have been a surprise that through this exercise, I, exercise, I've essentially learned nothing. I have one, uh, piece of feedback that, that does not like any of the proposed dates, and would like to look at dates later in the summer. I have, um, then a, a range of times, anything from two hours to all day. And, uh, I think there is something of a pattern to those who responded with availability on any of the days indicated, the one they all have in common would be Thursday, the twelfth of May. I'm kind of interpolating between the results so far and a discussion, discussions that I've had casually with one or two supervisors that have been interested to, to chat about it. Now, one of the, the concepts, one of the ideas that emerged was, might it be useful to schedule a work session either on this one coincident Thursday, May twelfth, or simply bring it back on a regular board work session, uh, again, for, really for two specific items? One is, can we please all bring our calendars and try to pick a day later in the summer that would meet all of your schedules? Because clearly, for at least one of you, none of the proposed dates work. And then also, I think it'd be helpful to me and your department directors, if we could, at a, at a soon-upcoming work session, gather information from you about desirable topics for coverage, both at the retreat and at, uh, work sessions, um, further into this year. And, um, those are the results, that, that's the best I've got from the results I have, is that we need to talk about this further, so I would suggest bringing it back with calendars at hand. I will say that, um, you know, priority issues, um, identified so far, cover the range from, you know, planning, transportation, and brainstorming for our future, which are all very beneficial things. I think it's very important, I think the, the thought behind the retreat in the first place was to find some time that is less, um, structured, less regimented, less pushed, to enable the board to have a, uh, a more, a broader conversation about our future as a community.
Mr. Kabaski.
Thank you. Seeing that this is going to kind of drag on and be pushed later into the summer, is there a way that we could tack on to our next work sessions, over the past couple of months, an hour discussion on each topic, and sort of formulate the, the, the issues? And maybe our work sessions can be just a smidge more laid back, maybe we can do them down in the well, and we all sit around and talk for the first hour, hour and a half, and there's a specific topic that we're going to talk about? Because, you know, adding more dates is, is a lot for a lot of us. And so, if we can at least get the ball rolling, and then maybe later on we all come up with a date, we can get together, take the, take the, um, the, uh, work we've already done, put it into a package, and then discuss it at that time, but not wait until that time, because I do think that there's a lot of common issues that we probably would like to discuss, and, in a less formal setting, but if it has to be here, you know, regular time, you know, noth- nothing extra, but just put it at the beginning of the meeting, and, and however we structure that is fine, but just start discussing the issues, or the end.
I was going to say, given the, given now the, the habit, the, the procedure of having public comment at work sessions, having typically at least a short consent agenda, we may want to have these discussion sessions at the end of the agenda, have a, a short recess. We may make sure we have some snacks or beverages, a ten-minute recess, and then reform around the table for a, a less formal segment of the meeting.
And, and if I might, since I was the one that, that had brought this up, this is not to add any more meetings to any of us or to staff. It was really to get, from all seven of us, discussions on issues that, you know, are obviously pertinent to the county and what's going on, and really discuss them in a, a less formal setting, but if that can't be accomplished, at least get the discussion going. And I know that we have very good discussions when that actually happens. And I know that we have very good discussions when that actually happens, but it needs to kind of be structured and kind of have a topic that we're going to discuss, and keep it in those bounds. Because if we start off with proffers, then we go to planning, then we go to, you know, we're all off the rail. We need to try to keep it to an issue. You know, Mr. Chairman, you can use that gavel on, not on us, but yeah, right. I've been waiting for it, actually. But really, just to keep it together, just so that we can get some of these issues moving along. And we might find that it's beneficial, we might find that it's not. But I just don't want to wait all the way until the end of the summer, and then we all get together and nothing really comes out of it. So that would be my suggestion, just to add a little bit, and to keep it really tight within an hour or so.
I would much rather do that than schedule another day or a retreat or whatever. But why don't you propose a couple of time slots to maybe, or initial subject, or just a forming discussion potentially in the next meeting? Not necessarily the full-blown, but take some time in the next meeting to discuss how to lay out, you know, the hour-long or 45-minute-long discussions or...
Right.
At the next meeting.
I think if we could fit the, perhaps if we could fit both the recess, a brief recess, which I think would be helpful with the, just kind of shift everyone's gear, and the discussion, fit that total in an hour. That it's recess and discussion, all within, so about 45 minutes discussion, because I think it'll be 10 minutes to get a bite to eat, 45 minutes discussion will be under an hour.
All right.
We'll have some narrow topics identified that are, we can make some progress with in that kind of timeframe.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. So I guess we're going to take a recess?
Work reports?
Is, are there any reports? Anyone? Okay. There's no closed meeting?
There is no closed meeting, that was a placeholder, and we had no necessity for one.
All right. Just take a recess until...
Yes, sir. All right, we'll check on them.
Okay. It'll be, till finance gets back.
Board, I was inquiring of the staff, and Carl here, as to what tradition has been, and I think at least a brief overview, what's before you are a series of four resolutions. The top on my stack anyway is a resolution to adopt the tax rates for calendar year 2016. And whereas responsibility of the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors is to set tax rates for calendar year 2016, and whereas Board of Supervisors received comments on the recommended tax rates from citizens of Spotsylvania County at a duly-advertised public hearing, and resolved by the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors as 12th day of April 2016 that the following tax rates for the calendar year 2016 be and are hereby approved as set forth below. And there is the full table of tax rates, as we have discussed. The real estate rate being eighty-five cents per hundred of assessed valuation. And the rest, would you like me to read these for the record?
Does anybody want them read for the record? I think, you said yes? Okay. I don't think so. I think it was, we've gone over enough earlier. So with that, do we have a motion to approve?
Go moved. I will say resolution number 2016, and we go alpha or one. How would you?
The number will be assigned once it's enrolled in the minutes.
All right, so the resolution to approve this 2016 county tax rates. Mr. Skinner has made a motion to approve. Any comment? Call the question.
Four yes, with Mr. Ross, Spencer McLaughlin, and Dr. Trampy voting no.
Next is a resolution pursuant to section 2138 of the Code of Spotsylvania County, Virginia, to set the percentage of personal property tax relief at the level necessary to exhaust Personal Property Tax Relief Act funds for 2016. And the salient portion hereof focuses that the, the Board of Supervisors pursuant to section 2138 of the Code of the County of Spotsylvania, the percentage of tax relief that is anticipated to exhaust PPTRA relief funds provided to the county by the Commonwealth shall be set for the tax year 2016 as follows. For personal use vehicles valued at $1,000 or less, the percentage of relief shall be set at 100%. And for vehicles valued at more than $1,000, the percentage of relief shall be set at 39% for up to and including the first $20,000 of value.
Do we have a motion? A motion, any comment? Call the question.
Seven yes.
Next, a resolution to adopt the fiscal year FY 2017 budget. And again, this is in the standard format and with the details as discussed in the work session here just concluded.
Do I have a motion to approve the 2017 budget?
Go moved.
Any comments? Call the question.
Four yes, with Mr. Ross, Mr. McLaughlin, and Dr. Trampy voting no.
And finally, as a resolution to adopt the fiscal year FY 17 to FY 21 capital improvement
Do we have a motion to adopt the capital improvement plan?
So moved.
Any comment? Call the question.
Six yes, with Mr. Ross voting no.
That's all we have, correct?
That is all we have, Mr. J.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go moved.
Call the question.
Oh, Bonnie, thank you once again. With all.